Welcome to the Falmouth Chamber of Commerce.
The Falmouth Chamber is dedicated to working on behalf of our members to make Falmouth a better place to live, work, and conduct business. We are committed to developing the economic, cultural, educational, and civic interests of our community and welcome the support from all organizations to achieve our combined goals. Whether you call Falmouth home, are a summer resident, or a visitor, we hope you take advantage of all that the Chamber has to offer.
People think that a locally owned and operated appliance store may not offer what they need. Actually, we have trained and dedicated sales associates, expert delivery and installation, professional repair service, and personal customer service. Plus, we have access to a huge local warehouse with over 6,000 models in stock. Crane Appliance, we call the Cape and Islands home.
Carlson Printing for all your printing needs. 508-548-7303, or toll-free at 1-800-696-7303. Our email address is carsonprinting@aul.com. Carlson Printing for all your printing needs.
Hosting services for FCTV.org are provided by Meganech Communications. Meganech offers a wide array of internet services, including mega-backup cloud service, server colocation, T1, fiber, metro ethernet, as well as telephone services such as hosted PBX and digital voice. Their number-one goal is to keep your communications network up and running and allow you to focus on growing your business.
Good evening. Welcome to the October 7, 2019 Board of Selectmen meeting. We are about to go into executive session under Mass. General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 21A 3, settlement of police officer personal injury lawsuit. And as Chair, I note that not to go into executive session could prejudice the town in future undertakings. Do we have a second?
Second.
And we will return at approximately 7 o'clock.
Second.
Okay, all those.
Brown, aye.
Seth Patterson, aye.
Brian, aye.
English Braga, aye.
Jones, aye.
Okay, thank you. Good evening again. We just returned from executive session and we're calling the open session back into order. Could you please rise and join me for a pledge of allegiance?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have a proclamation tonight for Community Media Day Resolution, celebrated annually on October 20th, so coming up. Whereas the sharing of ideas and information helps to build common understanding and common values within a community, and whereas access to information in today's media environment is critical for the healthy functioning of our community, and whereas Falmouth Community Television, FCTV, provides a means for diverse communities to tell their stories, hear each other's stories, and create new stories together, and whereas FCTV provides information to the community that is not covered by mainstream commercial media, and whereas FCTV provides its members with the skills necessary for the creation, sharing, and consumption of knowledge and ideas through the media, and whereas FCTV is an important resource for participating in local democratic policy and processes, and whereas FCTV connects community organizations, schools, and local government to their constituents, and whereas in many communities, people are not aware of the diverse and valuable programming on public education, government access channels, or community radio channels, and whereas communities will benefit from increased general awareness of viewing audiences for and creators of media content created by and for the community. Now therefore, be it resolved that on October 20, 2019, it is hereby proclaimed as Community -- excuse me, Community Media Day within Falmouth, and all people are hereby called upon to promote the importance of community media, the training available at the Community Media Center, and programming available on FCTV Channels 13, 14, and 15, and through online distribution platforms. Be it further resolved that Falmouth Community Television plays a vital role in the building of our community by encouraging conversations about our common interests, increasing discourse around policy issues, fostering understanding of local cultures, and sharing information to improve our lives. In witness whereof, we have hereunto set our hand and cause the great seal of the Town of Falmouth to be affixed.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Did you want to come up, Deb, or say a word?
Hi, I'm Debbie Rogers. I'm the CEO of Falmouth Community Television and a Precinct 5 Town Meeting member. I want to thank you all for your proclamation in honor of Community Media Day, which is intended to raise awareness about the importance of free speech and accessible media. And with me today is Michael Palmer from our Board of Directors.
We know him.
Michael Palmer, just like to really emphasize what Denver said, and I'd really like to say that we have a great new facility there. It's been remodeled, and if anybody has the opportunity, please come down and see us. The availability of equipment and studios and being able to use community TV is just a great asset, and we appreciate the proclamation, but just come down and see what we got. It's a really great facility.
Thank you. And for folks of all ages, there are programs that you guys do for young people and, you know, for kids in school age, so really just something for everyone in terms of learning and being able to create their own content.
Absolutely, and I'll just, to piggyback on what Michael said, you know, having this new facility really allows us to become the full-fledged Community Media Center that we wanted to be and offer additional programs and services to the community. So I want to thank this selectman for your ongoing support. I want to invite the community down to take a look, as well as all the selectmen, our town manager and our assistant town manager, and thank you again for the proclamation.
Quick question. A lot of people might think that you're a town-related organization. Aren't you in fact a nonprofit that accepts donations?
We absolutely are. Thank you very much for reminding everyone. We're a 501(c)(3) public charity, so we do accept donations. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you very much. Excellent. Next, we have recognition. Mr. Brown?
I'd like to recognize the community's support for Brenda Swain, who's done so much for our town. Brenda's been a little ill lately, and she's receiving a lot of support, and I think that's great. And whenever somebody in town is ill, people in Falmouth really get behind them. Appreciate that and wish her well.
Definitely. Thank you. Any announcements?
I have one.
Yes.
So I am Falmouth's member to the regional government, the Assembly of Delegates. You may have read in the newspaper recently, there is a charter change being considered to eliminate the executive branch of the county government and to continue just with the legislative branch. I'm Vice Chair of that branch, and we're seeking a community input. There'll be a hearing at our next meeting, which is a week from Wednesday at 4:00. So please feel free to email the Assembly of Delegates, or take phone calls, whatever is your most comfortable way to read in or attend the hearing. I appreciate that very much, and I'm just going to take the opportunity to hand out to my fellow board members just a general summary of services that the county provides. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. Any other announcements? I have one about that the Army Corps of Engineers is starting to -- they released their statement that they're starting to do some work on two new bridges, and they're going to open up public comment, and I will pull that up and then give the exact information. But obviously, something that impacts our community significantly, so that comment period is just a 30-day period, and so we want to make sure that we are able to weigh in. Just want to see if I can -- I'll have to remind myself when I find it to give you the information. Here it is. Rep. Vera sent it to me. So if you go to, you know, basically what they notified is that they're going to have a plan for two new bridges, or evaluating some of the options there, and the timeline for that, and so you can weigh in if you go to Cape Cod. The study is available at capecodcanalbridgestudy.com, and there should be a link there. You can send your comments. Maybe we can put it up on our website, on the town website?
Yep.
That contact, so that people can make their comments, which are to be received no later than November 1. So we have some time to weigh in on, obviously, what will be a very significant project for our region.
But not for about 10 years, or eight years or so.
Exactly. Any other announcements? Great. Okay. Public comment, just to remind folks, public comment is an opportunity for individuals to weigh in on something that is not on our -- any matter that's not on the agenda tonight. You have two minutes, so if you want to make comment, please come on up and introduce yourself. Mr. Fineran, come on up.
Mark Fineran. I didn't make the meeting last, well, two weeks ago, and I'd just like to mention something that wasn't mentioned, and it wasn't mentioned in our local opinion sheet either. After more than 10 months, the Attorney General's Office came back with a ruling that in fact our Board of Health did violate the open meeting law on four occasions. If you look in your committee handbook, and I won't go through the whole thing, but it basically says that boards and committee members are supposed to take into account the public's feelings on this thing on any subject. What might seem like a good idea for a board and a committee is actually a bad idea for the greater town. I think that the Board of Health and management actually did consider this and chose best to work behind our back and give us what they know the majority of the people in this town didn't want. I just feel the need to point out that if there's anybody out there laboring under the false assumption that we're dealing with honest brokers here, they can disabuse themselves of that, and this ruling for the Attorney General is proof that that's correct. Thank you.
Anyone else for a public comment? Yes, sorry, go ahead.
Hi, Michael Pavan from St. Mark's Road. About double polls. I watched the last time, and I realized that's not on the agenda. I had some thoughts about it. They've been around a long time, and they generally don't get paid much attention to, except when an item--
If I could just stop you for one second. I just want to clarify, it is on our agenda tonight?
Double polls?
Well, the two double polls on St. Mark's Road that I think--
Those are not double polls.
Oh, the crooked polls. Okay, excuse me, you're correct. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I just had some thoughts and suggestions about how we might pay better attention to it. Now that Eversource has a database and a whiz that knows how to work it, they ought to be able to generate us regular reports that list all the polls in Falmouth by location and their status, including dates, when the poll became a double poll, who's done what work on it yet, so that we can be aware of what the situation is and how many there are, and also who's holding up the progress there. They ought to be able to generate a web-ready document that can go straight on the town website. They ought to be able to do it for every town, actually. So that's my suggestion on that. Also, I think it'd probably be a good idea to have their representative, or any of the utilities representative, come in maybe every three months and give a report on what progress they've made or not, and why. I happened to talk to an Eversource person who told me that their workforce that actually does the work on polls has diminished from 70 to 20. And I don't recall if that was workers or crews, but they're based in Yarmouth, and that seems like a great reduction. And I would think the double polls are probably something that they get around to when they don't have any other work that's more pressing to do. So I'd like to see a list so that the public could see it, and if a poll is not on there, double poll's not on there, could report it, and the process, how to report it, would be also included on the website.
Great, thank you. And just a reminder, during public comment, we can't respond back to you, so we're not ignoring you. We just have to take it all in, so. Anyone else for public comment? Yes. Hi. And this isn't about your--
I wasn't -- it was going to be, and then when you made the saying it can't be about if the article's on the agenda, I wasn't -- didn't think of that. Is Article 22 on the agenda tonight?
Yes, because we have to vote them.
Okay.
So you would just, if you want to make a comment on it, you would just hold that comment until we get to that part of the agenda.
Okay, perfectly fine.
So it is. Great, thank you.
Are we going to be taking public comment during -- because usually during our debate, we don't take public comment during our deliberation on those articles.
We didn't take any public comment last time either.
Are the petitioners going to be speaking?
The petitioners have already done their presentation. I know we had a request for some clarification in the last couple of weeks. There's been questions that we've received as a board, so maybe we can decide how we want to address that when we get to that piece. Okay, great. Anyone else for public comment? Okay. Under licenses, we have approved application for special one-day wine and malt liquor license, Patriot bartending service, touch a truck fundraiser, Cape Cod Fairgrounds, Sunday, the 27th of October, 2019.
May I move approval?
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Great. Under administrative orders, approve Eversource energy petition to install two polls on St. Mark's Road north of Neve's Way. And this was one that we held over from last meeting because we wanted to get some clarification as to whether or not the poles that were sort of tilting in the same area were going to be addressed, and we were told that it was going to be addressed. Okay, Mr. Pavan?
Michael Pavan, St. Mark's Road. I am one of two houses that are served by the current last pole coming south on St. Mark's Road. It's been tilting quite a bit, but I realized that unless it fell over, Eversource was probably never going to get around to it. Across the street from me and down to lots, a new house is being built, and that homeowner and I attended the public hearing about the pole there, and I brought up the issue that the existing pole is leaning quite a bit. All the poles are leaning away from the street, but the last pole that the two new poles would connect to is leaning quite a bit more. And I have no objection to the new poles. I want my neighbor to get power, and there's no problem with adding two new poles, but if they add two poles and they connect to the existing pole leaning away from the street with the wires going across the street, and then my pole gets straightened up later on, those wires are going to dip low above the street. I think now's the appropriate time for them to pay some attention to this crooked pole in order to provide more service down the street. So I'm totally in favor of two additional poles, but I think they want to make sure they start from a straight pole.
Correct. Great, thank you. Maybe we can pass that on to René.
Yeah, me.
Yep, great. She was very responsive and really answered all the questions that we laid out for her last time within just a day or two, so maybe we can just pass it on to her. So do I have any feeling on this particular motion to install these poles now that we know about the crooked poles that we had--
May I move approval?
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Second, we have approve Eversource energy petition to install one 4-inch conduit and one hand hole number 238H17 on T-Ticket Pass south of Seabrook Drive. We had held this, I believe we'd held this one as well. Is that correct?
May I move approval?
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great.
Both of those, the recommendation from the Engineering Department was to approve them.
Right. Mr. Johnson's time. Do you think you could get me a packet?
I can't--
Like an actual selectman's packet? I didn't have one in my mailbox.
I thought you said you didn't want a hard copy.
Well, I do, I don't, except that I can't get logged in for some reason right now.
I have the same problem.
Yeah.
You can't log in?
I can't seem to get--
It seems like there's something going on with the Wi-Fi.
With the Wi-Fi. So I just don't want to hold the meeting. I'll borrow, I'll share with--
And I will try emailing it. Let's see, are you trying to pull it from an email, though? Is that what you're trying to do that's not working?
Which I did at home, and it was fine.
All right, I'll get a thumb drive.
Just won't reload here.
Thank you very much. Or just a hard copy is fine, if that's easy. Okay. Number, letter C, approve historical commission application for CPC funding in the amount of $30,000 for Phase 4 of the Historic Inventory Survey Project. Mr. Suso, do you just want to remind folks what this is? We've kind of had this come before us previously.
Certainly. Yes, the Historical Commission had applied for funding to the CPC. That would need to have the affirmation of the Board of Selectmen to be considered to update significant historic properties throughout town. I think it's to expand that ongoing effort, so it would require the Board's concurrence to move forward.
Excellent. And we had asked them, and they did provide a letter to explain a little bit about what, you know, just to remind us what this project is and what's left to be completed.
And this would complete the project, is I understand it?
Yes.
May I move approval?
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you. Vote to accept FY 2019 Bulletproof Vest Partnership Program Award in the amount of $6,318.38.
May I move approval?
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Vote to accept the FY 2019 NARCAN Grant Award in the amount of $9,050. May I move approval? Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Vote to approve expenditure from the Recreation Department donation account in the amount of $1,212.83 for the purchase of pickleball sets. Do I have a motion?
May I move approval?
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Authorize application to State Emergency Management Agency for funding to modestly alter the high school gymnasium for potential emergency shelter purposes. Mr. Suso, did you want to just--
Yes, thank you. Don't know if we have a representative here, but absent that, in a nutshell, I had been in touch with School Superintendent Lori Dour, and Lori has been in conversation with the facilities manager as well, Patrick Murphy, our Emergency Operations Director, Mike Small, and working with Town Planner Tom Bott. Because of the vulnerability study that the town has engaged, we become eligible for potentially for MIMA funding, both state and federal, for purposes like this. If this would be approved, subject to the authorization of the Board as far as an application, it would allow some adjustments to the existing roof of the gymnasium at the high school, which has some glass panels in it, and is functionally, does not, really functionally obsolete in terms of its original design, as I'm told, and it would allow it to function as an emergency shelter to supplement the shelter condition we have in the high school already. So the school department representatives have encouraged that. There would be a 25% match that would need to come ultimately through funding through the school department, and they have carried this in the past in the Long Range Capital Plan for an improvement to the high school facilities. And I certainly recommend favorable consideration of the Board. The Finance Committee also looked at this and recommends favorable consideration, made to one suggestion about updating the cost estimate, which we're happy to do.
Great. Any further questions about this?
May I move approval to authorize the application?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you. Authorization for requests for AFCI funding in an amount not to exceed $4,000 for supplies/equipment related to the Mill Pond Initiative. This is something that we talked about just recently, but Mr. Suso, do you just want to just sort of update folks on what that $4,000 would--
You're happy to. The Board will recall that recent, at your last meeting, you authorized an application to Conservation Commission to allow this work to take place on Mill Pond. It's been talked about for a considerable period of time. I know I've been at several meetings at East Falmouth that have discussed this. I know Selectman Doug Brown has been actively involved as well, and I think we have some representatives from East Falmouth, the Village Association, here with us, and I certainly recognize the importance of this initiative, which they had brought to the town's attention some time ago. You have green-lighted the application to Concom. This request would be for AFCI funding, available to the Board of Selectmen, as you can see, in an amount not to exceed $4,000 for some essentially vegetation management in Mill Pond.
Just commented, most of this is equipment that could be, if this works out well here, could be used at other ponds also.
Right.
Absolutely.
Yep, well said.
Exactly. Floating rakes and things like that, it's not one-time use, so, good point. Any other discussion on the matter?
No.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Third.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great. Very excited to see how that goes. It could be a huge improvement for a lot of people.
And thanks for the support of the East Falmouth Village Association in supporting this project.
Under reoccurring recommended, the 20th Annual Chris Weatherby Memorial Toy Run from Eagles Hall in Buzzards Bay to the Navigator, Asshument Road, East Falmouth, Sunday, November 3, 2019. This is a motorcycle ride that starts out and is ultimately a toy drive, and those toys go over the holidays to benefit children on Cape Cod. Any questions about this? Is anyone here for this? Yeah, come on up if you want to just remind folks what it is and--
Good evening. Tammy Baptiste, Palmer Avenue. This is a motorcycle ride that has been done in our community for the last 31 years, named in my mother's honor for the last 20. We have changed, in previous years, we've always gone through town into the Carriage House. Due to some changes at the Carriage House and some stuff they have going on there, we've actually changed our route a little bit, and we are going to end up at the Navigator on Asshument Road in East Falmouth. I do have maps and road routes if anybody wants them.
Yep, they were in our packet, so thank you. That's always helpful to see.
What we would like to do this year, as you can see, is change the route, not come through the center of town, but do 28A to Brick Kilm Road and then up Sandwich Road, which keeps it the same length as it has been in previous years, but won't affect Main Street as much.
And how do you collect, just for people to, how do you collect donations?
Well, we have donations that, there is a box at the Pocasset Harley-Davidson shop that people can drop off toys to if they cannot attend, or at my place of employment, Shoreway Acres on Shore-- Or at My Place of Employment Shoreway Acres on Shore Street, we'll accept them there as well. Um, we will pick up donations as well if needed. Uh, otherwise riders and participants bring the toys with them to the Eagles Hall. We actually have my mother's grandchildren, who are much older in age now, um, who will take them and kind of create a little line and place all the toys into a large box, uh, box truck that we have, or, and we have the truck in the front of the procession, for lack of a better term. And that's what we do this year. The, um, Housing Assistance Corporation will meet us at the Navigator and we'll hand off the toys to them.
That's great. Wonderful. Any questions?
And just, it's, it's a great event for a great cause, but often causes consternation because of the noise it creates. Is there anything you can do to get the motorcyclists not to be breaking the noise by law?
Uh, short of ask, I mean, we've asked them every year to not create excessive noise. But motorcycles in and of themselves tend to be loud creatures for their own safeties. So we will ask them again as we have in previous years. And, uh, the state has, uh, its own noise regulations when they do the inspections of the motorcycles. There is actually a noise indicator that we cannot exceed.
The route's an improvement.
Mm-hmm, agree. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? All right, do we have a motion?
Move approval.
Second? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great, thank you.
Great cause.
We're...
We, uh, internet seems to be working now.
Oh, okay, I'll check back in. We're a little bit early for our seven-thirty public hearing. Can we please, um, vote the request for sign variance, number four, off sign, off premises signs, Gosnold Incorporated, for the, um, prescription take-back day, Saturday, ten twenty-six, twenty nineteen.
All right, move approval?
Second.
This needs to take eight minutes, so...
I have some other things that we can do. We might be able to do one other thing. That's gonna be long.
Okay.
Um, okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great. Um, let's have a quick discussion, 'cause, um, I don't think it's gonna have to be that long. Number six, further discussion on Board of Selectmen Subcommittee on Proposed Municipal Broadband. We waited last time because we wanted to get some input from EDIC as to whether or not posting, uh, agendas for their meetings would be problematic if we were going to regularly have selectmen attend. We got some feedback and they said that that's not an issue. They really want to have participation from the Board of Selectmen. Um, so, uh, we need to make a decision as to whether or not we want to vote a subcommittee and if so, who will be on it so that we can kind of, they're going down the road of the process already. They've already had a couple of really important weeks where they were interviewing potential, um, consultants. And so we wanna make sure that we're, you know, we can understand what's going on and...
In fact, it's on the agenda tomorrow morning, if anyone wants to meet me here again.
There you go.
Really early.
What time is it?
Uh, we start at eight-thirty tomorrow, but it'll be an executive session primarily. But there'll be a general report.
Hmm. I promised to be in, at a job in the morning, so I can't really say I can do it tomorrow.
Yeah, but that's okay, Chris.
But aren't you, sort of are representative on this?
I am, yeah, sort of.
So why aren't we using you as the liaison, so to speak?
Bless you.
We're trying to give her some backup.
I, I think it's backup and I think it's, um, in case I'm not able to attend. They're separate meetings. It's not just the EDIC meetings. And just to kind of broaden the perspective.
Right.
Is it always morning?
Uh, no, it's, the subcommittee will, hasn't, um, had regular hours, to my knowledge.
Right, it's been a mixture. I've gotten some emails about them and didn't wanna attend anything 'cause we hadn't really voted on it. But some of them have been conference calls, call-in meetings where you don't have to be there. Um, and some of them have been more kind of afternoon. So it's really varied.
But the conference calls can't be legal anymore if it's, if we even have a subcommittee.
If we have two people there, yeah.
Uh, but if we're, if they're a subcommittee and part of this committee, then they can't do conference calls because we have not, as a town, accepted that as being a legal way of running a meeting.
Right. But I thought we had talked about if we, if the subcommittee isn't always regularly attending, right? I mean, I guess it's gonna be, some of their meetings, no, you know, maybe only Sue's able to go. Correct?
I mean, it depends.
It depends when it is, yeah.
But they'll have to post that in advance, no matter what.
Right.
And they can't do that as a conference call. But again, this is where I go back to, you may be tying the hands of this committee that's already working quickly and effectively by putting a subcommittee of selectmen on it. Then it changes the whole makeup of what that committee is.
Right. No, I mean, I think Doug raises a, a good point in the sense that if they like to be nimble, they can't do the conference calls anymore, which seems to be something that is productive. Sam, did you have your?
No, I've been sort of plugged into this group, uh, all along. Uh, have met with him on a number of occasions, just to compare notes. Um, I would ha- be happy to be a liaison, but, uh, Tuesday morning is a built conflict for me. I, I, I don't know whether I can commit if I can't really do the job.
I don't think it's, um, likely. It would be during EDIC meetings, which are already packed, for what that's worth.
I would be more than happy to serve that function and i- if we can fit into a little better time slot.
And did we discuss, um, just sort of the parameters? I know, Peter, you had kind of taught, spoken to this before, the parameters of what really constitutes a subcommittee. I mean, it's regular attendance by dedicated, kind of the same dedicated, or not, and it doesn't, it's actually just regular attendance by two or more selectmen?
Right, essentially by the board making a determination that these are two members of a, of our board who are going to serve a certain purpose and they're going to communicate with each other. That in and of itself is creating a subcommittee and, and those two individuals are then subject to the open meeting law and posting meetings. So as distinct from, if from time to time, there were two members of the Board of Selectmen, but it might be a rotation, they weren't predetermined, but there happened to be at some meetings, two members of the Board of Selectmen, it's not a quorum, so that would be okay.
And so it's no conflict, I mean, obviously Sue's somewhat regularly part of this conversation 'cause she's on EDIC. Although, are you working, have you kind of regularly been working with this subcommittee?
From the beginning, although I've not been able to make many of the meetings. Sometimes they're ad hoc on the weekends. Um, if I might make a suggestion, I'll be happy to bring this up to the EDIC tomorrow. And we are, we're interviewing two new potential members, one of which is Courtney, who's on the, the Citizen Committee. And I can get a feel for, um, whether there would, eh, it would be anticipated that there would be any telephone conferences. I doubt it. I think that they're far enough along where they, they would meet regularly, but at least that would be more information if you wanna, uh, put this off for that piece of information tomorrow.
Yeah, I mean, I think that, that Doug just raises a good point, that this is moving along and we don't want it in any way, it's not our project. We do want to have a sense of where, where things are going and weigh in with the concerns that, that, you know, that constituents bring to us to make sure that that's sort of heard throughout the process and not at the endpoint. Um, but we certainly don't wanna, you know, stymie it in any way, so...
No, and be of assistance to the committee in moving things along quickly.
Yes, exactly. So maybe if you could just flush that out with them a little bit more and then we can address it.
Happy to.
Are people comfortable with that?
Yes. Shall we carry that then, uh, to the next agenda?
Yes, please, thank you. Okay, well that took up, uh, oh, thank you very much.
That's good timing.
Yeah, alright. So we have, well, in three minutes, but if I start reading it, it'll take the time. Notice of public hearing. Notice is hereby given that the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Falmouth will hold a public hearing on Monday, October seventh, twenty nineteen, at seven-thirty PM in the Selectmen's Meeting Room, Town Hall, Falmouth, Mass, on the application of Amen Clower LLP on behalf of T-Ticket Car Wash LLC for a wastewater flow variance under chapter one eighty, section fifty-six of the Code of Falmouth, the so-called Flow Neutral Bylaw, for a car wash at one eighty-seven T-Ticket Highway in said Falmouth parcel thirty-nine fourteen zero-two-four B zero-zero-zero, per order of the Board of Selectmen, publication date Friday, September thirteenth, twenty nineteen. Thank you, welcome.
Uh, good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. For the record, my name is Kevin Clower. I'm an attorney with Amen Clower Law Firm here in Falmouth. And I represent the applicant, Green Ocean Car Wash LLC. They are the leasehold interest holder in the property at one eighty-seven T-Ticket Highway. I'm joined tonight by Matt Costa from Cape and Islands Engineering, as well as Matt Traffic from the Arrowland Company, Bob Keen, Ron Campania, and the applicant himself, Clint Kendall. We here before you tonight requesting the variance from the Flow Neutral Sewer Bylaw. This property is located, uh, on East Ticket High, on T-Ticket Highway in East Falmouth. It currently contains a dilapidated one-story building, which over the past few years has contained a number of uses. You know, it, uh, most recently was Tina's Ice Cream, prior to that was Quiznos, Honeydew. It was even approved as a Jiffy Lube at one point, though that didn't come to fruition. Uh, the applicant is seeking to raise and rebuild the existing building there and to construct a new car wash at the site. We have received a site plan review approval from the Planning Board, as well as a special permit decision from the Zoning Board of Appeals. This project is well-vetted. Uh, the applicant has worked diligently with the applicable boards and the three-hundred committee, who is the abutter at, uh, T-Ticket Park. This project is on the municipal sewer, so is therefore subject to the Flow Neutral Bylaw, uh, which requires this board to approve increase in flow exceeding ten percent over the flow that was permitted as of January one, twenty fourteen. Based on, uh, industry standards and projections, we anticipate approximately thirty-six hundred and fifty cars a month, which is a hundred and twenty cars a day. Each car wash would use a total of eighty-three gallons, of which sixty-two are reclaimed for reuse by the system. Six are considered lost in evaporation and fifteen gallons would be discharged to the sewer system. The most recent permitted use, the use that was in effect as of January one, was as a class-four fast-food restaurant. There was an allowed flow of, uh, one thousand fifty gallons per day. And with the ten percent increase that's allowed, that would be eleven hundred and fifty-five gallons. We're proposing, um, the application states tw- about twenty-two hundred gallons. I actually think the number's closer to eighteen hundred gallons per day based on the traffic flow that we're anticipating. So we're proposing between eighteen hundred and twenty-two hundred gallons per day, uh, which is an increase of six hundred and forty-five gallons, uh, or, over what would be allowed with the ten percent increase. The applicant's installing a three-tank water reclamation system, which will capture and recycle the water. There's also an oil-water separator, uh, which ensures that there's no discharge of any oil or other materials to, other than, uh, water to the sewer. These are both maintained on a regular schedule. And the solids from the reclamation tanks and the oil from the oil-water separator are pumped out regularly per state guidelines. In accordance with the board of, uh, this board's regulations, we've demonstrated to the Board of Health that we're capable of placing a Title V system, uh, that would accommodate the highest potential amount, uh, on-site. And I believe this board's been informed by Ms. Lowell, who I just talked to, a minute or a short while ago, the wastewater superintendent, that sufficient capacity does exist at the treatment facility. Under your regulations, your guidelines that you put forth with regards to wastewater, uh, variances, this will have an effect on economic development, development. There are jobs that are being provided here. There's gonna be at least two attendants on, at any given time, so there's a number of jobs that'll be provided. And there is a result in it, uh, this will result in an increase in valuation to the property, which will increase the property taxes. Further, and I don't think this is a, a small issue, but they're taking a, a dilapidated, long-underutilized property and improving it in the condition, uh, improving the condition of that site in a meaningful manner. It's gonna be utilized in a way and a shape that's appropriate for this area. Given these reasons, the applicant respectfully requests that the board would grant this variance under Code of Section Falmouth one eighty-five dash fifty-six A to allow the redevelopment of this property. Aye, along with other members of our board, or, uh, our board. Our team would be happy to address any questions that, uh, this board might have. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, just to sort of refresh, 'cause I know we've done it a few times, but it's still, I think, helpful to go through and for the, uh, folks at home to be reminded that we have, um, a waiver, uh, policy or guidelines, rather, um, and that we have, you know, areas that we should consider, which are economic development, affordable housing, mixed-use development in business redevelopment zone, and municipal use, just sort of broadly speaking in terms of, um, uh, some of the things that we consider when we, when we take a look at it. We have, um, received a letter from the Board of Health indicating that, um, there was a, a positive referral for compliant Title V that could be cited. Obviously, it's connected, um, to sewer, which is why we're having this hearing, but that's one of the requirements. And as well, we have a letter from, um, from Amy Lowell. I'm just trying to find it in here.
She's here.
Oh, okay.
If you wanna just...
Yes, in the very back. Hey, Amy, how are you? Um, did you just wanna come up and just sort of let us know where this, um, does anyone have any questions about her letter about where this, uh, puts us in terms of meeting, hitting our, our eighty percent?
I think it would be helpful for folks.
Yeah, if you wanna come on up to me, please. It's just always a pleasure, always helpful to kind of walk through again what it is, we, what the trigger is and what we're asking, what we always ask of you with these.
Um, so you have the letter, I believe in your packet, uh, that I'd written, saying that there is sufficient capacity with, in the wastewater system for this, uh, use. The Flow Neutral Bylaw variance is triggered, uh, the Flow New Bylaw requirement for a variance is triggered, as you indicated, because it's an increase of more than ten percent over, uh, previously committed use. Taking into account the, um, the flow from our existing service area and the flow that's projected from the LPSA's service area that was recently completed, as well as all the other projects, um, that have been granted Flow Neutral Bylaw variances and the forty-B projects within the sewer service area. Um, if you add this project in, that takes us, uh, to, uh, right up to approximately eighty percent of our average of the, excuse me. So, to eighty percent of the average annual flow limit in our groundwater discharge permit. So our groundwater discharge permit allows us to discharge seven hundred and ten thousand gallons per day, divided among two areas. And, uh, you take into account all of those projects and this takes us up to, um, approximately eighty percent of that number. What that, the reason we talk about eighty percent is that our groundwater discharge permit requires the town to, when you actually, when your flow to the plant actually reaches that eighty percent threshold, you need to, uh, provide the state with a plan saying how you're going to continue to accommodate that flow in the future. The town is submitting a plan to the state in December of this year that the Water Quality Management Committee has been, um, spearheading. Um, and that, that plan includes a number of, um, facets, but one of the facets is proposed, uh, additional recharge, um, and a capacity for the wastewater system. And they've identified some citing options. Um, and that, so that will be forwarded to the state this winter and it will be considered beyond that point. So the town is, um, planning for additional recharge in the future.
Questions or comments yet?
But we have not reached the eighty percent point actual flow. That's not projected to happen until two thousand twenty-two. So we're a little bit ahead of the game by doing this now, which is, of course, a great idea, but...
Right, yeah, sorry if that wasn't clear. Uh, it's, it's, as we go along, I'm adding up everything that's approved. There are some things that, that are approved that may not happen. Um, things change, uh, all along, but I'm doing what I can to tell us where we are relative to that target.
I think it's been really helpful for, for this board because, you know, you're just, these projects take so long sometimes that, you know, even if you think you have a sense of where, you know, which projects are in the queue, um, to have you really tallying that up and keeping track of that, I think is very helpful as we, as we go through this process.
Thank you.
I have a question. Is discharge from a car wash any more problematic than, uh, regular sewer discharge?
Um, if it's well-managed, it shouldn't be. Um, I, I, um, there will be, we've, I've communicated to the applicant that there will be a groundwater, excuse me, a sewer connection permit required for this. Um, and I will, the, the department will issue a, um, a permit for this, for this site, which basically says you have to meet state and local requirements for the discharge. And it allows us to monitor if we need to, and if a problem comes up, we can go on the site and, and check it out and, and resolve problems if they come up. But, uh, as Mr. Clower said, um, they are, or Attorney Clower, has said they are, um, planning to put in an oil-water separator and a reclamation system. Um, so if it's operated properly, it should be okay.
Okay. And often, things like this or things like the high school that are actually more, uh, pure water, but a higher level of water as opposed to affluent is often better for the system, is that, or am I...
Uh, I, I guess I wouldn't necessarily say that. I mean, the wastewater plant benefits from food, you know, which is what, what comes from standard wastewater. Um, but it's, it's fine, you know? Uh, it's mixed with a lot of other wastewater, so I'm not terribly concerned about that. I will say, I, uh, that the town is pursuing additional recharge doesn't mean we have it or that it's guaranteed. That is something the town is going to have to work towards, uh, or we will run up against the limit beyond eighty percent. And so, um, you know, right now, we're in a stage where we're, we're taking the appropriate actions and planning ahead, but we are going to need to move forward with this if we do wanna keep, uh, allowing, um, expansion and redevelopment within any of the existing service area or expansion beyond that.
Right. Which is a great point, 'cause that's one of our, I mean, that's a, that whole area is a focus of really, you know, the hope of kind of redeveloping, um, you know, the hope of kind of redeveloping, um, devastates and reworking that. And so it's something that will be important to consider, so.
And from, uh, for Attorney Clower, please. And just to, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Just, you know, going from the, the cautions of our water superintendent where we're right at eight percent, we have to be careful in terms of what's allowed at this point. We're not even going to make the application until December. So I'm trying to understand how, and I, I'm not sure that you come under the priority areas of consideration. So the one you mentioned, I mean, it doesn't, there's no affordable housing, there's no mixed use because it doesn't combine residential, it's not municipal. So you're looking at trying to fit in economic development. And I thought I heard you only mention two employees, so that's, and the, so I guess I was trying to at least look at revenue generated and taxes paid. Maybe the difference between the, the taxes after its development or some kind of way to fit it in.
So I, I did mention there's two employees at any given time, but that's probably going to be somewhere between six and eight jobs added in the market. And I do think that there's, um, the site now versus the site as it will be developed will have a pretty substantial difference in property valuation. And that will increase the local tax base. So I do think it falls under economic development with those two concepts in mind.
And it is anticipated to run year round, correct?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
In fact, winter's the, historically the busiest time of year for car washes. Winter and spring is, is the industry busy times.
Will they have a preference for Falmouth residents being hired in these six or eight jobs?
Sure. Yes. And I should point out that Mr. Kendall is in fact a Falmouth resident. He's a, owns a, owns a home here in Falmouth and he is a taxpayer and this is his other home. And he, I think, takes a lot of pride in what he's doing, so.
Thank you. Any other discussion from the board before I take any comments from the audience? Anyone who wants to speak in favor of this, uh, application for a waiver? Anyone who wants to speak in opposition? Okay.
I move to close the hearing.
Second?
Second?
All those in favor of closing the hearing?
Aye.
Aye. Any further deliberation from this board before we vote? I, I mean, I guess I would just say that in general, I think, um, you know, the piece that is most appealing to me, because I, I, I do think it, um, it touches on the economic development, not as much as we just sort of usually like. We've kind of looked at bigger projects, but I think the piece that was pointed out that this is a derelict property that has just sat unused. It is, um, you know, it's in a state of disrepair, it's an ISO. And so this is an improvement, not just in terms of the tax component, but just all around. You know, that, making that part of town just more attractive. So that is compelling to me, whereas if it were kind of redeveloping something that already looked nice, I'm not sure I'd have the same feeling about it, but.
I prefer if it had some sort of affordable housing on top, but above a car wash, probably wouldn't be the best place to live.
And is that a pretty fair rendition? Are you planning on having the solar panels and?
Yes.
Great.
Yep.
That's good. All right, any other discussion? We ready to make a decision?
I move approval. Should we add some findings?
Oh, yes, I know, thank goodness.
Good idea.
Okay, so, um, we've, I guess we would find that, um, it will create, uh, six to eight new jobs that will be, um, have a preference for town, um, residents to fill those jobs, that it will, um, I guess beautify a property that's in the current state of disrepair.
I believe in the packet I read that there was some hours of operation. I think it ended at eight. I'm not sure exactly.
Sounds right.
Yeah. There is, uh, little apartments next door, so we don't want it running too late into the night.
I guess my question, in terms of the hours of operation, I wonder if that's better handled by the zoning board of appeals?
Okay. I think it probably already was.
It is part of that decision, yeah. Okay. I just don't remember the exact number.
Yep, that's fine.
There is sufficient capacity on the property for Title V. And that we, according to wastewater superintendent, we do have sufficient capacity within the treatment facility at this point.
Great.
If I might, um, the, you, you mentioned, you touched on it, Megan, but the fact that it has been long vacant just is a very concrete way to, to state that this is a revitalization.
Great, good way to point to, yep. Yep. Excellent. Okay. Any other findings? Okay, with those findings, we had a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
I guess, second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, we have under seven forty-five, um, business presentation on marine biological laboratory activities. Welcome to Mr. Patel, the new director. Doctor. It doesn't, it doesn't have any clarity.
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to come to speak to all of you. I'd like to quickly acknowledge that also in attendance is the Chief Operating Officer, Paula Spear, and the Chief Development Officer, Sebastian Lay. So I'd like to take the opportunity to tell you a little bit about what the MBL is and what it's been up to. So it's one of the oldest and most eminent private research laboratories in the United States. It is home to about two hundred and fifty, uh, full-time staff, but in the summer, we have about fifteen hundred visitors that come either to teach, to learn, or to do research there. We count amongst our numbers up to about sixty Nobel Prize winners that have worked or taught at the MBL during their careers. And for many of them, seminal parts of their work have actually been conducted at the MBL. And what we, part of our reason for where we exist, and we've been there since eighteen eighty-eight, has to do with the unique geographic location. So this is a, a spot where warm and cold waters meet, and that leads to an incredibly high biodiversity. And that's responsible for the location initially, because it was a summer sort of laboratory for people who are interested in studying creatures where there was that great biodiversity. And you can still see that today. On the right is shown a picture from a trial from our research vessel Gemma. Again, if you, you may, you know, dive in the water and not think it all, it looks all that great, but because of this rich biodiversity, it's an incredible place to do research. And, um, this is an image of our, of our research vessel Gemma, which goes out constantly and collects organisms for our, our research and also provides research organisms to a larger community across the United States. So our research, it can be divided into a couple of different areas. So one is biological discovery using marine organisms. And I should emphasize that most of our work does have some sort of roots in marine biology, but we're much more than that. So we actually do fundamental research in many different areas of biology, including cell biology, neuroscience, development, regeneration. But a lot of that is based on this diversity of marine organisms that we find here. And in fact, one of our initiatives going forward is to expand the repertoire of marine organisms that can be used in fundamental marine research and to make them what we would term genetically tractable, so usable by modern methods in order to make biological discovery. We also have a very prominent ecosystem center that's interested in understanding ecology and climate change. So in addition to facilities or, or research sites that are in the local area, we also operate on behalf of the National Science Foundation, two long-term monitoring sites. One of them is at Plum Island, north of Boston, and the other one is in the Arctic, the Arctic LTER. Um, and so these are very important places where there are long-term data studies and modeling that are essential in understanding how, um, the environment is changing and its resiliency to change. We also have a center that studies microbial biology and evolution. And increasingly, there is an awareness that understanding microbes in the environment is key to understanding ecosystems. And likewise, um, over the past few years, people have become, uh, aware that in fact the microbiomes in the human body are actually absolutely essential to normal health and to curing and treating diseases. And finally, one of the other initiatives that we've, um, launched is to actually, well, in a sense, up our game in imaging, so in microscopy. So again, MBL's been a place that's well, well-known for that. In fact, when I took this job, I got an email from a, a professor named Eric Betzig, who had won the Nobel Prize a few years ago for his breakthroughs in microscopy. And he reminded me that those first microscopes had been built in the basement of Lur, one of our buildings. Um, and so this is another area that we are expanding and trying to, um, increase even more our, um, our applications and our, um, understanding in this area. So, um, and we also enjoy being part of a larger scientific community. So while we are the oldest of the private institutions here, we of course have, um, great interactions with our other scientific institutions, including the Woods Hole Oceanographic Institution, the Woods Hole Research Center, the NOAA Fisheries and USGS and Sea Education as well. And I think that actually is an important part of the ecosystem here, as it were, of science in, in Woods Hole and in Falmouth. Oops, sorry. And in July of two thousand thirteen, the MBL formed an affiliation with the University of Chicago. And this may seem a little unusual, because Chicago is not located very close to, um, Falmouth, but in fact, the MBL has a long history with the University of Chicago. For the first two directors and then myself are all faculty at the University of Chicago. And four of our buildings are named after faculty at the University of Chicago. And so we welcome this affiliation and this has been incredibly valuable to the MBL, both in terms of finances and in terms of the scientific mission of the institution. And so our economic impact is fairly significant. So we, um, have a budget of about forty-six million dollars. And you can see the two major components of that are grants, mostly federal grants that we get, and then funding from the University of Chicago. So we have two hundred and fifty full-time employees. About half of those are scientists or staff that are directly engaged in the research. And the other half are the support staff that support both the research and education missions. But the remarkable thing about the institution that really sets it apart from many other places is this enormous expansion that occurs every summer. So about fifteen hundred people come and visit. And these are either scientists that rent lab space, do research here, because this is an ideal, uh, place for what they might be working on. And then the other part of that are students that come here from all over the world. So we have more than five hundred students from, you know, more than three hundred institutions in thirty-eight different countries come in the summertime. So we are, and I can say very proudly, the place to take courses in certain areas of biology. So microbial diversity, parasitology, developmental biology, cell biology. We are the institution that people strive to be able to say that I took a course there. And then we have faculty that come from, you know, all of the major institutions in the United States to, to come. And then we also, um, host, you know, many other meetings, um, and we have the facilities for that. So we have the dorm space, the meeting space. We have cottages that in the summertime can hold many of these people. And then we also feel like we have a very large and, and very important impact on the community. And the community is incredibly important to, uh, so for example, we have the Friday evening lectures and the Falmouth forums, where we invite speakers from all over the country to speak. And Lilly Auditorium is often completely full to capacity with those speakers. We're involved in local ecology research. We help with the Fourth of July parade. We offer public tours through our facility. We have the science stroll. We are welcoming to high school students and other groups that want to tour our facilities, learn about what we do. We also allow, have public access to Stony Beach and we maintain the waterfront park. And in fact, we're actively engaged in trying to shore up that seawall and to secure state funds to do that. We maintain a large auditorium and a large dining facility that in fact are open to people who want to use them. And I think the, the other thing that I want to stress is the unique opportunity at the MBL for learning and education, which I think again is something that we're very prominent and unique at. But it's our philosophy of how we learn, so one of the things is that we teach students to be very fearless, to do what they want, whatever they want to try, and not to be afraid to fail. And that's something that's often actually hard to get across to students who are starting careers in science education, but that's something we really strive to do. It's also a, a demanding sort of, um, curriculum that we run. So you can, um, come by the MBL at three in the morning in the summer and the labs are still full of people who are actively working. And we take great pride and have a lot of fun doing that. And again, teaching has been something that's been integral to the MBL since it was founded. This is a picture from eighteen ninety-three of the embryology class. One thing you might notice is there's quite a number of women in this class. And so we've always been welcoming to a diversity of people taking courses. And this is the embryology class in nineteen seventy-nine. And it just gives you an example that it's not only the researchers who are making Nobel Prize-winning discoveries, but the students and the other people engaged in education. So shown here, um, is Joan Ruderman, who went on to be the first female director of the MBL, and Tim Hunt, who won a Nobel Prize in two thousand and one. And in fact, that work that was done was a collaboration between Joan and Tim that occurred during the course. And what they discovered is the, um, proteins that are required to power the cell cycle and important in understanding cancer. But they started doing that work in sea urchins and starfish. And that's where it started, but then it quickly moved over to being relevant to human health. And this is what the embryology course likes, looks like today. Part of the reason that we have such success in these courses is we have amazing equipment. A much of that is what MBL owns, but a good part of that is loaned to us by corporations every summer. So we are actually loaned about thirty million dollars worth of equipment every summer to do our teaching, because those companies realize that it's the key place for everyone else to see what they've built and what they can offer. And I, I'd add that those summer courses are geared towards graduate students and post-docs. We also, um, offer undergraduate courses, and that's something that we hope to actually greatly expand upon. So we have a long history of offering a course semester in environmental sciences. But using that model, we hope to expand into other undergraduate courses that are both for University of Chicago students, but also for students coming from any other institution. And we are also starting to have short courses in September and we're increasing our involvement in undergraduate installation, education. We've just received recently a hundred thousand dollars from the state to expand our internship program. We're very excited to work with local colleges to, to do that and to fill those internship positions. And then I'm very happy to say that we've also launched what is just started, but seems very successful, a high school program. So taking that same intensity that we offer in our advanced courses and having a six-day version of those courses, where we get students to actually do hands-on genome editing using CRISPR-Cas9, which you hear about in the news, imaging, um, DNA sequencing, all in six days. And, uh, we're very happy to report that one of our trustees has donated a significant sum of money so that we can make these courses available to public high school students and to charter school students. And so we're reaching out to local high schools in the area now to really get that going. And we hope to have students taking those classes this spring. And, you know, the feedback that we get is amazing. And, you know, a lot of people will say, oh, well, the tran, the, the, um, teaching we do is transformational, but we can really say, that's the comment we get back from everyone that takes our courses, as this really transforms their careers. And I think it is really a unique experience. And finally, just to show you again that our two big initiatives are in imaging and developing new research organisms. I show this movie, this is imaging of a fly embryo, and it shows some of the modern microscopy that we can do. So highlighted here are different types of cells within the nervous system. But I wanted to point out that this was done by a high school student doing one of our courses, right? So we teach them to do the imaging and the computer, um, work needed to in fact analyze that image. And then finally, the other initiatives in developing new research organisms. And these are two of the organisms that we happen to be developing for basic biomedical research. So one is a amphipod crustacean that you would see on the beach, and the other one is a cephalopod, a squid. And they both have various reasons for wanting to study them. For example, the amphipod on the left, we've shown, has the remarkable ability to regenerate its legs when they're cut off. And so of course, we love to know how it does that. And something like the squid has remarkable abilities of camouflage and controlling its skin color. And it's evolved a brain that's very sophisticated, but done it completely independent of the lineage that's led to us. So it'd be great for understanding fundamental principles of neuroscience. Um, and so I'd like to end there and I'm very happy to take any questions that you might have. Thank you.
Great, wonderful. Thank you so much. You know, we just, the, the goal was obviously to, um, just kind of get an update. We hadn't had one in a while. And I think that, you know, it's always been the case that we are always looking for more opportunities to kind of collaborate in some of the ways that you've pointed out, to really just get the most, from a selfish perspective, for the town, from this incredible resource. And some of the, that, um, component that you just pointed out in terms of having the, that connection with students here in our community, I think is really significant and, you know, building on some, a history that's already been there, but just kind of formalizing that. So it's wonderful to hear that that'll be expanding.
Right. I think one of the other things is that in, so I've only been director for a year and a month, but this is my twentieth summer here, so I'm one of these people that's come over and over again to work here. And I have to say that, you know, MBL has an amazing reputation in the scientific community. And, but that's, um, the flip side of that is we have almost no reputation in the public. And that's something that we really, really need to change. So one of the things we're doing- So one of the things we're doing, for example, is expanding our public space in the Marine Resource Center to really highlight the work that we do and trying to engage, to really to explain to the public. It's sometimes a challenge because we do very fundamental, basic biology. And so it's not like, you know, we can come in and say, we have a lot of human patients here and we're studying this disease. But we can, if you will give it, if people will give us a minute, we can show them why what we do has led to many different breakthroughs in basic medicine.
Yep, Doug.
Having that water station across the street is going to get you a lot of good press.
Yeah.
I wonder if you could tell me, it's not any science question, but just what's the age of your building and condition? And do you see down the road having to rebuild that?
Yeah. So, I mean, that's, this is something we, you know, we discuss all the time. So obviously, the, you know, we see the importance of maintaining the outsides of our historic buildings. But we are a research institution and we have to maintain the insides of the building to be compatible with cutting-edge research. And so a good example of that is we, as we're going forward in this imaging initiative, the requirements for the kind of rooms that you need to actually have these microscopes is really exceeds the kind of space that we have right now. So at the moment, we have a ten million dollar earmark from the state to actually do the improvements inside of the Lilly Building to do that. So we're very aware of that and have been making improvements inside of our buildings over the years. And it's very important that we do that if we're going to stay on the cutting edge of research. The other thing is, you know, to harden our buildings against the sea. And also, as the temperatures warm, we're finding that buildings that didn't used to need air conditioning are more and more going to need ways to keep them cool.
Right.
And that's also partly because the equipment generates a lot of heat inside the buildings.
Okay, thanks.
Just sort of a broader question. Do you see any of your research shifting or changing because of that, the issue of sort of the, you know, the warming seas and maybe the biodiversity that we so love because you had this coming together of these different temperatures and depths? Really, I mean, obviously, there's still something there to research. But I'm wondering how that, in the long term, you know, how you're thinking about that in terms of the impact.
Well, one thing, of course, is because we've maintained long historical records of what's collected and what's where, right? We actually have very good documentation of what's going on. And we are seeing a northward shift in organisms. So things that we used to collect right outside the MBL, we have to go further north for. And things that we would have to have gone maybe considerably south for, suddenly are coming up onto our, onto our shore. So we are seeing that. So, you know, with all of those things, there's definitely a downside because with those shifts, usually there are things that begin to disappear. There's occasionally an upside if something will come that's a little easier. But by and large, of course, it's something to be concerned about.
Yep, Sam.
I wanted to thank you for giving us a sense of the relationship between the University of Chicago and the MBL. Because I've often wondered about the loyalty there. But what you just described to me is really an integration of staff and science that I was unaware of before. And that's reassuring to me.
Yeah, and I can say that, you know, we've just presented our five-year plan to our trustees and to the University of Chicago. And it's met with their approval and it's met with their continued financial support. And there are many components of that that involve better integration with the University of Chicago, including getting graduate students here and things like that. And I should, I should just find, you know, mention again that part of our plan is to become a much more year-round institution. And we have the facilities and everything to do that. In fact, you know, I would say one of the things that I've always found just sort of shocking is we have this beautiful building for teaching in that was renovated about ten years ago. It's absolutely fantastic, teaching facility with amazing equipment for teaching. And it's, of course, completely full in the summer and then empty in the winter. And there's no reason it needs to be empty in the winter. And so many of the things we're striving to do are to fill up our facilities year-round and make them usable. Part of that is that, you know, we aren't going to be just dependent on the organisms that we collect in the sea, which we may not be able to get in the winter, but more and more to raise things in our Marine Resource Center so that they're available to scientists and students year-round.
Thank you.
And just to that point, do you find, so for folks who are coming to finish kind of their doctoral studies and really focus in and run their work in their own lab, do you find that it's challenging to get them to come here because of some of the issues that we always hear about, which is sort of struggles with housing and a demographic that isn't always open to folks that are generally their age? So is that something that you hear or is it more just kind of, you know, expanding the program so that they're there?
Yeah, no, it's definitely a challenge. So, I mean, in the summer, we don't have problems attracting people, right? But Woods Hole doesn't have problems attracting people. I mean, there's lots and lots of people here. So the challenge is in the rest of the year, how to do that. And I think that's where we're saying, okay, if we have the organisms available year-round and we have the microscopes and the facilities and the housing available. So there are some things we need to do to, you know, make us more attractive. But basically, I mean, let's face it, our weather is really better than Boston's really most of the time. And so, you know, that's the thing. There are some interesting challenges, like we're part of the Woods Hole Diversity Initiative, right? We want to diversify our workforce. But we are in a community that's not very diverse. So how do we make the community more welcoming? And that's something we feel can only be adequately addressed by all the institutions working together. It's too big a problem for one institution to tackle on its own. And so we've been trying to make progress in that as well.
Great. Any other thoughts?
I think just the outreach to the schools will help with that.
I'm sorry, what was that?
Outreach to the schools should help with that.
Though I have, I have to say that, you know, our outreach, our education component has probably been the most successful at generating diversity. It's the hiring staff, getting faculty that are more diverse. That's been more of a, you know, that's more work that's required.
And that's something that's ongoing throughout the town. I mean, we talk about this quite a bit. I was just talking about it today, in the context of school, you know, school staff for some of our public and private schools here, having a challenge with that as well. But I would have to say it's, you know, this year was sort of one of the first years with that diversity initiative that it was great to see folks coming from MBL out into the community and really generating that conversation. So, and I think some individuals from that initiative came to our committee potluck that we also had. So it's really, you know, I think that that's, that's something that's nice that, as you noted, you know, you have a reputation with the science community, but not so much in the local community. And that's one of those ways to really, you know, get at that, so. That's great. We are really thankful that they took that on. Great. We're really looking forward to, you know, just hearing further. And also, as you noted about the seawall piece, I know we'll be talking to kind of collaborate a little bit further on what we can do to make sure that we can secure some funding, to make sure that we can shore that up.
Right. And we very much appreciate that. And I'd just like to end by saying, if you ever have any desire to come visit or tour the facilities and understand more about what we're doing, we're very welcome to that.
Thank you. Love to plan a field trip maybe. Thank you. Thank you so much. Next, we have Steamship Authority Status Report Update, Bob Davis.
Welcome.
Yep.
Thank you for inviting us. Here with Kate Wilson, you know, Falmouth representative, of course, to the board. I also have Chris Iwerks and Liam Davis from Beto and Iwerks for the second portion of our presentation this evening. The first presentation, I think, goes back to the, we had received some, the town had received some correspondence from the community regarding the traffic at the Luskam and Railroad Ave adjacent to our Slip Three. Sorry to just open this up here. The, you know, part of this traffic, as I'll show you in a minute, is a result of the ongoing construction that we have there, the limited work that we have in terms of what the turning radiuses of the vehicles are and things like that. We continue to try to make improvements in that regard. It's getting there, unfortunately. There he is.
There he is, there you are.
Peter's very intimidating. Technology does not disobey him.
So, this is an example of one of the comments that the town had received that we were copied on in terms of the vehicle traffic for customers coming out onto Railroad Ave. This was taken, I believe, before the Labor Day weekend. At that time, the limit of construction required that the trucks getting onto the vessel in Slip Three had to go around where our buses were staged and where our pickup and drop-off area had been, as well as the pita pan pickup and drop-off. So this is an aerial view of the terminal. And you'll see I've added a red line here. So that's basically about where the limit of construction had been. In the summertime, that ended approximately where the mouse is. In a sense, now that we've passed Labor Day, that's expanded. The middle slip here is under construction at the time, so that area is all off limits. But it's allowed us to pull back the pickup and drop-off area, as well as the bus staging area. So then we have an aerial view from, from the slip. We've been able to add in crosswalks, some signage. We've added in stop signs, stop line. And this is actually a video, but I won't play it, it's too long. One of the things that we have in terms of the access into Slip Three now is when the trucks are making the turn, previously, they were making the turn and going up Railroad Ave and then backing down. So because we're able to pull back the pickup and drop-off area, that what they do is, is the target that we tell them to go to is a rock that's on our property on the corner. And if they back, if they pull up to that rock and then back, back straight down, they should be fine for access into the slip. This is an example of some of the signage and crosswalks that we put up, stop lines. Again, the reconfigured pickup and drop-off. So this previous, this area right here previously had been for the pita pan bus and for the Cape Cod Regional Transit Authority. So we've moved them over to where our buses are because it's the off-season. This is looking down from the slip. Again, the stop, stop signs, stop line that we have for vehicles as they enter into the public way there. Just another view from the side. And this is taken from the corner of Luskam and Railroad towards the slip. So we've added the taxi stands along that portion of our property here. And, and again, just the things. These are not our trucks, I'll point out, that are servicing the local residents, the local businesses, so. Crosswalk, been made aware as we, as we look at these a little closer. It did take a week or two after Labor Day for them to be painted. We had some bad weather. They were done. We've since been made aware that they're starting to fade already. So we're going to be looking at getting those redone so that way they make it through the wintertime. And that's it regarding the, that one. So if you have any questions regarding the traffic issues.
After Labor Day, there should not have been any trucks going up that road.
It took a couple of weeks for us to pull back the pickup and drop-off area, as well as the restaging of the buses and that, so, and then the striping, so.
So when did that stop?
It should, you know, are there times, there may be times that they still, some of these drivers may end up swinging that way. But they should be, as I said, pointing, they should be going towards that park, that rock there, and that lines them up for the vessel.
Any time is unacceptable. Not one time is unacceptable. Not, I mean, now, right now, you're saying, it could be ninety percent of the time it's happening as opposed to ninety-five percent of the time before. I'm not reassured. I was there having dinner last week, saw it happening again. This is unacceptable.
We have directives out to, out to the terminals. They have the station, they're going to be, they have been, they're going to continue to station people out there to direct the traffic.
Someone who's working there who completely ignored me. And this is what happens, is that you don't do anything about it. You make directives, or when someone does violate the directive, what happens?
Well, in this case, whether they're going out onto the, onto the public way to make the turn, I'd have to know what the situation was in terms of, you know, was there, was there any reason why they, that happened, so.
But there's no acceptable reason for it to happen, yet it still does.
The vehicles that we have, the normal, the normal ship is, the routine ship is, have been made aware of the requirement to stay on our property when they're doing this. Whether it's, whether we have some long-haul, over-the-road drivers that are doing that, we'll have to be looking at that a little closer.
So when I look at my picture that I took, it will not be one of your regular drivers?
I'd be happy to see the picture.
Do you have any staff that's out to really help monitor that?
So between the vessel crew, a crew member from the vessels will be going down to that stop sign to stop the traffic. We'll also have the, one of the dock workers that is there to go out. And then we're having discussions about when we do have state police details on, on the property to be going over there as well.
Just seems like it would be helpful to have sort of designated personnel for that. Because I get it, the rules are kind of changing. You have people that, even though you've told individuals, maybe it's a different driver, maybe people just don't pay attention, maybe they don't care. But it's, you know, I think the frustration is that there's not sort of a go-to person, that that's their job. It's just to make sure that however things are changed, as they're changed throughout the process, that that is, that's sort of all they do on the property is, is, you know, deal with that issue. So that, so we're not, you know, the community's sort of not constantly struggling with. It's because it's not, obviously, it's not very efficient that folks send us a complaint, then we have to reach out and try, you know, I mean, it just, it's not, it doesn't solve the problem quickly, it doesn't address it, so.
So I've gone down there myself to watch what's going on. To be honest with you, I was shocked the first time I went down there because there was a car coming down Luskam. And the vessel crew member actually went to stop that vehicle to allow, and it's like, no. They had the right of way, we have to abide by that, let them travel. Traffic has to be stopped and then they can proceed when it's safe to do so, so.
It just seems, again, you know, just for, if there were sort of a, and, you know, it's not going to be needed always. It's just while this development is going on. But, you know, sort of a division, I'm not saying you create, but, you know, on each shift, that there's always someone that's there. Like that, you know, as you're noting, that person's stopping, that someone that's always there that knows what the protocol is, you know, has, has it down.
Well, I guess I'm concerned about whether it is going to be happening. The plan for this third slip was, this was never going to happen. Even during the construction, this was not going to happen. And yet it is happening. I'm not reassured that it's not going to happen once the construction's done. You suggested that, well, during the fall, we're able to move the parking out of the way. But it sounds like during the summer, we'll be right back to where we were this summer.
So when we get to the summer, the north pier, the north slip and the middle slip will have been completed. At that point, the limit of work there will be pushed back, what, seventy feet? Approximately seventy feet. So that will allow for the turning radiuses of the trucks that'll be coming, coming in going.
We don't need to be using the third slip much then, right? I mean, the whole idea is this third slip is a reserve store boats, not used all the time slip.
No, as, as I explained last time I was here, that's not the case, that restriction went away.
But, no, wait, the legal restriction went away. But certainly what you promised the community is this third slip was a standby store the boat. I know you don't have to use it that way, but that's what the community was told, was that this was not going to be increasing usage, was not going to be increasing traffic, was not going to be increasing anything. It's just allowing us to store a boat there. And now that the restriction's gone away, you're telling me that you're going to be using it full as much as you want?
There's actually times where we will be using that slip. The design of the terminal, the slips for that terminal, that there are different elevations to allow because of the tide conditions, the freeboard of the vessels. So there are certain vessels that will be using that slip on a routine basis because they line up better in terms of accessibility.
Certainly very different than what was presented to us when this proposal came up five years ago. It was very clear when you brought it to us early that the third slip was going to be a standby slip and not used on a regular basis. And this is very different, completely different language that you're now stating is an absolute fact. It's very disturbing to hear this now because it's nothing I've ever heard before and I've been to a lot of the meetings.
Well, again, when we went through the process and we went through the permitting process, you know, there are times we intend on using that slip. Again, we're restricted by the amount of staging we can do on the property. We're restricted on the other side in terms of our operations in Vineet Haven, in which there's only two slips. We build our schedule around those two slips, in the event that, plus, weather conditions don't allow us to go into, into there. We also take into account sea streaks, activities from New Bedford that go into that, into that area, so. There are times, because we had that third slip, will allow us not to have to operate a vessel, because there have been times before where we've had to operate a vessel just to keep it out of the way. So by having the third slip, there are times that we will be able to tie up a vessel, so.
That was the intention all along?
Yes.
That's just a completely dishonest point of the Steamship Authority, because that was never made clear, the intention all along was to use this third slip as heavily as you're going to. This is the reason I don't trust anything that we're told by the Steamship Authority. And the fact you say you're going to keep these trucks off the road is just, is a minor issue, but again, I have no faith that's going to happen.
We're going to work on it. Will it happen? It may.
And you'll do nothing about it?
No. Well, you know, we'll be working to make sure that we educate the drivers. We'll be working, make sure that we educate our employees down there to be able to keep it.
Will you be fining trucks who actually disobey it? Will you, will you prevent any of them from taking, coming on the boat again?
I'm not going to go that far, no.
What about if they come too early for the 5:30 boat? Are you going to actually find trucks and don't allow them to come as per your regulation?
So we, we've gone through that, that process?
Have you done that to any truck?
I'd have to get back to you on who, on what's happened. I know we have one number, I'm not sure whether we have restricted anyone.
You've actually followed through on the warning that you assured the community you would do.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I guess, you know, obviously, you hear the frustration at almost every meeting, you know, that where the public kind of weighs in, or they weigh in through their elected officials, that the frustration is that it's, you know, obviously it's a big, it's a big project, it's a big undertaking, but some of these things have some, some simple solutions, which again, is to designate personnel. You guys have a lot of really great qualified personnel, many that live within the community and are well aware of the concerns, they've heard about it. You know, to designate some of these folks to make sure that some of these issues aren't happening, rather than, you know, it being incumbent upon sort of people in the community to try and scramble to find somebody to report it to, which then, you know, four weeks later, we're able to come to a meeting and talk about it, but it's just, you know, that's a frustrating kind of snowball rolling down a mountain type of approach to some things that are, some of these things are fairly, obviously others are complex, some of them are fairly straightforward. And I think if people saw a real commitment-
Just with the, the amount of shifts that we have, and with the vessels and the terminal, the terminal people, to have someone there, you know, during the entire business day, it's going to vary depending upon the shift, and, you know, particularly for using the, the crew members as well to assist in that, in trying to control that traffic a little bit more, so we can work on that.
Wouldn't that be a job for a parking lot attendant? Wouldn't you designate somebody to be in that area?
No, it'd be one of our terminal workers.
I mean, just to, you know, just push back a little bit, I think the, I think the difference is that I'm saying, you know, this special occasion calls, calls for perhaps a special approach, that you're, you know, we're not just going to say, if you're the general person working the terminal at that time, try and run out and address this, but rather someone whose job, their, their job description is that, to address that.
And for the most part, there probably will be, but there's going to be times where it's going to be someone else, because someone's on a break, someone's not in that day, or whatever, or they have other responsibilities, but for the most part, it probably, it normally is, by and large, you know, Monday through Friday, it's the same people that work that morning shift, or the afternoon shift, so.
But, you know, now after going through a whole season of the truck drivers getting away and the guys helping them block the cars, they're all going to kind of assume that it's okay to do that, and it's just the way it is. And you're going to have to retrain all the drivers who've been doing it wrong all summer. So it would be easier to just do it right the first time, and get somebody out there and manage it, because once the truck drivers learn how to do it, they'll do it right.
And if you just created a job position, I mean, I don't want to sound like a broker broker, but it would just be someone's job, not, they don't do anything else, that's, you know, really kind of what they do, and, and it's the same person, or there's somebody in that shift all the time to address it. I mean, it's, this project is worth lots and lots and lots of, of money, and one or two positions that, you know, are not, that's, you know, not going to be, it's going to be a drop in the bucket in terms of cost, but it means a lot to the community in terms of being able to access, you know, the, the space in which they live year-round, and, and, you know, this is kind of a constant source of, of stress and tension for them, so.
Yep, Sue.
I, I just want to clarify, so, the Board of Selectmen in Falmouth is trying to problem solve for the Steamship Authority's management issue here, which I think is extraordinary. And, but it seems like there's, I haven't heard, first of all, I didn't hear you come with that solution. Second of all, I'm not hearing you agreeing to that solution, which reminds me of some of the public meetings I've been to, where the board doesn't listen to the community. And I, it seems that it, things would go forward much, you know, more expeditiously if there was better communication. Part of communication is when, when one side states a need and the other one comes up with the solution. And this side is actually stating the need and coming up with the solution, so I think it would go a long way if, rather than sort of saying, I understand, if you said, now that it's been forcefully suggested, yes, we will have someone in a position to direct traffic on the Steamship site, it will be a dedicated, assigned position.
Well, again, we had identified that we needed to have someone there, we put up the stop signs, we-
This is sort of a yes or no question. Is that something that you're willing to do, yes or no?
Yes, we're willing to look at that.
Thank you.
Again, always categorized.
Look at it.
Not do it.
At least we got a straight answer.
That's, I don't consider it a straight answer, it's the kind of answer we always get.
Well, I'll keep encouraging from the inside.
You just got to come on up, Kate. For the folks at home, yeah, just let people know who you are.
This is a topic that we've talked about. I'm sorry, do I need to?
You missed yourself, Kate.
Kate Wilson, Falmouth representative to the Board of Governors. These are topics that have definitely come up, and I have said, I called Bob up, I said I was just going down Luskam, I had to wait because all the traffic was coming off the Steamship lot as if they had right of way. And I said, we can't do it that way. And it takes a while, because sometimes management doesn't hear that until it gets, more emails come in, phone calls come in, Julian sends us a note saying, could you please come? So it is, I don't understand why that difficulty exists, but it does. So I'll keep doing, from my position, keep reinforcing these things. I think it would be wise to have some sort of dedicated position where that very issue is watched. And not only that, but also the pace of the trucks and traffic coming off of the boats at Slip 3. When it's busy, they're all going up the hill, there's going to be a major traffic jam, you're going to have to pace it off and hold them, and, you know, pace it off, is what I'm saying. So, I'll keep pestering you.
Yeah, I mean, I think you, you raise the point of why, you know, it, it takes so long, and I mean, part of it is, there's really sort of a power differential, because we can, you know, this is a really large entity, and if somebody's trying to go down Luskam Avenue and cars are coming out, that person's just, you're going to just wait, right? And then you're going to get frustrated, and you're going to try and tell someone, and after maybe a month, we can get a presentation, and I, we thank you for being here, you knew it wasn't going to be sort of, you know, cake and ice cream, but at the end of the day, you know, the process is really, it's very frustrating, and probably nine out of ten complaints never even get expressed, because everybody has to go about their day and go to their job and deal with their family, and so they just sort of swallow it, and it, but, you know, there's a theme here of every public session being, you know, really a lot of pushback, and I think the reason why that's happening is because of exactly what we're talking about. There's not a lot of solutions brought, or even kind of a real commitment to solution-oriented approach. And, you know, nobody's, this is a huge project, no one expects it to be perfect, but, you know, I can say as this board, we've fallen down many times, you know, Board of Selectmen in terms of communicating with the public, and one of the things we've, these five people have really tried to embrace is just more public listening sessions, and not just listening, but taking from that and trying to do with that. And I think that, you know, the benefit of it is, you're, you know, yes, you're going to fail at it, but you actually are creating some goodwill, and then people want to try and work with you, and I think that's, we've seen that on some of the issues we've tried to tackle in town, and that really takes initiative of management to try to hear from people and show the people that you've heard it by trying to implement some of these things. So, I mean, you guys are all incredible managers, you manage a very big entity, but, but the piece that's lacking is folks feeling like you're hearing them.
Again, some of the restrictions that we had, when this was first brought to my attention back in August, you know, we're in the height of the summertime, it was one of our busiest weeks, historic week, year after year, road waste week, that's our busiest passenger week. So to be able to try to move those pickup and drop off areas, the bus, and things like that, that, you know, it wasn't going to be something operationally that should be, should be, tried to be done at that point.
But it should have been anticipated. I mean, your job should have been to see it, know it was going on ahead of time. What did you think they were going to do?
So, in, in terms of the, in the-
The trucks.
The trucks turns?
What did you think they were going to do?
I thought they were going to be going through the bus pickup and drop off area, so that way they can, they can swing around and then back, back down onto the slip.
Why didn't they do what you thought?
They did, but apparently they kept going, because of the fencing that we had there in place for the pickup and drop off area, it made their swings go out farther into the street than-
So you guys messed up, and didn't want to correct it. You say, well, it's too busy now, we're not going to correct this now, because this is our busy time.
Again, when it was brought to our attention, it was, you know, late in the summer, and at that point, you know, to be moving, to move, move those things around at that time, you know, was not going to be as productive as when we were able to get to it after the Labor Day weekend.
I'm sorry it wasn't solved immediately. You should have been taking it seriously enough that this is actually something you would solve immediately, and this is the frustration we're hearing, is it didn't take a while for you to hear, it took a while for you to do anything. You actually knew it and said, we're going to wait three or four weeks, we don't care. Those are the words, you said, we're not going to deal with it now, it's not, it's too big, we can't do it?
We had to make plans to have the crosswalk restriped, we had to make plans to, to be moving-
So why wasn't the crosswalk set up correctly to begin with? You said it was just some fencing that had been misplaced. I don't understand why the plan wasn't in place in June to make sure it was correct.
The crosswalk in the summertime was directing our passengers to the two southern slips, because the northern slip was being used primarily for the freight vessel, because it would tie up in the afternoon, so it only ran a, three trips a day. So there was limited passenger going, going in that direction, so that's why the crosswalk wasn't put back in until after, after Labor Day, once we're, we're going to be using that slip as a, as a regular slip during the construction of the middle slip.
And maybe you shouldn't have done that during the summer. And these are things where we do get promised, has, another person has contacted us, eighteen months ago, an RFP was suggested to be presented to New Bedford for freight. Has that been written up yet?
It's on our website, we're waiting, we're willing to hear from anyone that would like to, like to submit a proposal for that service, as I mentioned, has been mentioned at previous presentations to the, to the select board, so.
Did you have a second?
What I want to talk to you about next is the progress on the, on the terminal design. So we have a, another concept here that we'd like to, to show. So just as a reminder, you know, we've been going, we've been looking at various concepts for the terminal, you know, going back to 2017, 2018, number of them in 2019. So at this point, where we're at, is this bottom one, where we're looking at a one-story flat roof terminal building. The site plan, this is the plaza area, it's situated on this plaza. This, again, is a concept. We've talked internally, we've talked with our architects about moving that building as far north as we can. It is something that we'll be looking to do. Looking from the, the bridge, elevated view over the bridge, would be the one-story building, solar panels on the roof, canopies over the bus pickup and drop off area to serve two purposes, energy, energy generation, as well as shelter for, for our passengers. View of underneath the solar canopies. The architects and engineers have looked at this, and based on the solar canopies over a one-story flat roof building, as well as the canopies over the bus pickup and drop off, we feel we can generate fifty-two percent of the energy use of that building. Another view of the, from looking inwards, so from the water side, the, there'd be ramps on either side of the building to get people up. So the plaza itself is at ten foot six inches, the first floor elevation of the building is going to be at thirteen feet, so there'd be a ramp system to get up there, as well as stairs. Took the pictures that we had from the view shadow. This has the building situated on the south side of the plaza, as I mentioned earlier. We're, we're going to be looking to move that as far north as we can. And then this has the interior of the building, we have the passenger waiting room, we have the ticket office, cash room for our ticket sellers, a small vending area, there's a break room for the workers that are at that terminal building. We have an agent's office and a terminal manager's office, restrooms for the employees, the public restrooms. The mechanicals and electrical are going to be within the building, so they're not up on the roof. Some elevations from the north and the east. South and west. And this is a cross-section of the, of the building, so this is the lobby area in this, in this area. The mechanicals are going to be raised within the, within the building. The building itself, as I said, base floor elevation will be thirteen feet, it's required to be seventeen feet, so we're going to be looking for a variance for that. We're going to be try floodproofing the building, which means they'll have a stone exterior, and wherever there's openings, will be a deployable fence that will be installed in the event of a flooding, flooding event. In order to accomplish making that building a one-story building, the utility building, which was slated to go over to where that freight shed building is currently, would need to expand. So the utility building basically had been a rectangle before, so we've added this little L to it. This is outside, it's uncovered, it's for a trash recycling area. This section here is for oil storage, so that will be segregated from the rest of the building with a, you know, fire protection and a berm, in order to make sure that if there's any spills, it's contained within that section. A number of these elements that are here, we're still discussing as to which order, but this being the first floor, this is equipment storage, so we'd be putting in our snow blowers, our Kubota tractors, things like that, it'd be stored in here. We have consumables, so that'll be for the vessels and things like that, stores that they need, that they need to do. This is a two-story building, and if we're making it have- This is a two-story building, and if we're making it habitable, uh, we need to have two means of egress. So we have stairs towers on, on the north and the south side. We've also added an elevator to make it assess, uh, the second floor accessible. We have lost and found area over here, a pickup area for materials that are going to Vineet Haven and Oak Bluffs. Vineet Space, nine is for our concessionaire storage for them. Then on the second floor, there's nothing, nothing here, cuz it's open up above. We have the elevator lobby, we have the machine room for the elevator, the elevator itself. We have an employee locker room and the restrooms. We have the mechanicals for the building, we're putting them inside the building, telecom. We have linens that we supply for the vessels. We have a break room for the employees, a, a multipurpose room, which is when we need to do training on-site for the terminal employees. We have that, and then this is general storage, so. And these are the concepts that we have for that building. The original utility building that we had envisioned there was going to be, was gonna be a two-story, it was not gonna be habitable. Uh, so therefore, but, uh, the, uh, access to the second floor was gonna be through the employee parking lot. But as I pointed out earlier, now that it's gonna be habitable, we, we have to have two means of egress. We had this shown with a pitched roof. In the L portion of the building that we're now adding to accommodate the elements that were in the terminal building on the second floor, uh, we're thinking of a flat-roof building, uh, thinking that we have an opportunity there to try to, between the two, to get an element of a design in that building. We looked at the square footage, so where the terminal building had been, approximately sixty-seven hundred square feet. This reduces it to about fifty-six hundred square feet. The utility building meanwhile, is growing because of a... About forty-seven hundred square feet, and then, um, we're putting it at seventy-two hundred square feet now, over in that, over on that side. You know, we've had to duplicate a lot of things where we had employee restrooms in the terminal building, we're gonna have to have them in the utility building. Mechanical spaces, electrical spaces, tel, data telecom, things like that, the elevator, additional stairs. So, um, we have this concept, it's something that we're, we continue to work on. We did, I did meet with a couple of the neighbors, uh, over the weekend to give them a preview of this, to try to get some of their input. We'll be taking that, we'll be working with the architects. The idea is to try to come back with a, a design of the terminal building and the utility building that's more in fitting with what the, the community is looking for, but also serves our, our requirements. We do have an operation to run, we do, we do have over two million passengers coming in and going through our terminal building. And, uh, we do need to make sure that we have sufficient, uh, you know, items in place for, for that building, so.
Just like comment, I, I think there's some things that I can't quite see exactly how it's gonna work. But the fact that it is so different from where you were before, I do appreciate that, I think it's a, um, I think there may still be some concerns. But it, so many of the other plans we're having were just incremental changes. And this is such a dramatic change that I, I do really appreciate that you've come forward with something that I think does, makes an effort to listen to what the community is saying and come back with something that's a very significant change.
Doug?
Yeah, I feel the same way. I think you've really come out of the box with this, it's a good idea. And it'll probably work a lot better for you, having all your ship services on the other building, so, better for the customers. I think now you're on track with something there creative.
Any other comments from the board, questions?
I just wanna reiterate what the two Dugs have said, is, you know, it's really a lot of, you know, like sort of starting fresh, and I really appreciate it.
We have been listening, it's just a matter that we had to get to a point where we can, it's something that we feel is, we can, it can work for us. But also give, give as much as we can consideration for what the community was looking for, so.
I think if the takeaway is just to, you know, apply some of that methodology to some of those day-to-day problems. Because, you know, those are the things, the quality of sort of life issues for folks that are living or working around this area that just build up. And we know you hear about it, we hear about it. And it sometimes undercut some of the other good work that is taking place. So I think that, you know, the takeaway is trying to problem solve a bit more, maybe proactively or timely for some of the things you've heard about tonight would be, I think, very helpful.
I also want to acknowledge, I think what you've said a number of times is this is conceptual. And I would hope you'd come back with actually what you're really thinking, because sometimes conceptual can then change dramatically from an aesthetic point of view that, uh, I think we'd love to be able to see. When you've moved past the conceptual, that we get to see some of the design features of it also.
So there's, there's a number of things that, in that regard, that we have, we had to address. One, we had previously, we went to the historic, um, historical commission to give them a preview of what was then a two-story and a three-story option. And, uh, we, we'd like to be able to go back to them just to show them this one story and to get a little feedback from, from them as well. The utility building, as we're looking at this, we feel it's, uh, we're gonna have to go back to COMCOM on that one because of the footprint of that building is now, has now grown. But the building itself on that plaza, uh, it remains in the original, uh, the terminal building itself remains on, on that plaza. So that falls within the original scope of, you know, of our licenses there, so. You know, those, those are a couple of things there. The other thing is that, uh, before we do come back, um, you know, I owe it to my board. Uh, this concept that we're looking at, um, we're estimating to cost about three million dollars more than the two-story terminal building. And in the two-story utility building, that's not habitable. Once we made it habitable, it, the cost for that building went up significantly because of fire protection, um, the mechanicals, the elevator, the stairs, everything else, so. Um, that's gonna be something that I'll have to go back and convince the, the Cates fellow board members that this is the right thing to do. But I, I, I think that, um, you know, they, they know they wanna do the right thing by the community as well, so.
Just send them to one of these meetings in your place and then, and maybe it'll make that an easier process for you.
It seems like you're getting a good value though, for that much space for three million dollars additional. It thinks, it seems to make sense to me just from a quick view.
I'm hoping I can temper it that we did get that two-and-a-half million dollar grant, so.
Thank you for your presentation. Any other comments from the board, any questions?
Is there any more subjects for tonight?
Uh, I think that's all I was asked for.
The one other question I was gonna ask you is, follow-up on Doug's question with the, uh, the truck drivers and the early arrivals and the Jake brakes and stuff on the Woodville Road. Do you feel like you're getting through to the drivers? Because there seems to be some that just don't get it, based on some of the comments I'm getting from residents.
So, um, in, in terms of that, we're still, we're, we have, uh, putting together the draft report on the, uh, on that early morning trip. Uh, we expect it, uh, we'll be presenting that to the board, council and the board this month. You know, one of the, one of the elements that we're looking to do is to be able to work with the town, you know, town of Falmouth, Oak Bluffs, Tisbury, about, there's a common problem that each of those communities have in terms of the, the vehicle traffic. And whether it is an opportunity for us to be able to work a little closer with, with the town on, you know, a task force or a committee or, or whatever, work, working group, uh, to be able to try to see what items we can tackle and knock off the list. Now, in terms of like the Jake brakes, those trucks, my understanding, those trucks that come down in the morning, those aren't trucks that have Jake brakes. So, um, later on, the bigger trucks, yes, they do have Jake brakes. You know, in, in terms of that, we, we do tell them, whenever we do the bookings, we send them the letter to refrain, if possible, from using the Jake brakes. But for us to be, you know, imposing that they can't use it, and it's gonna be a safety issue in terms of a driver and things like that. So, uh, we can, we can request that they refrain from them if, if at all possible, so.
And could you just remind me, what is the reason why we have to have freight early rather than passenger service?
So, uh, well, in terms of it, um, in order to, to free up a trip coming from the island, we need to free up a slip on this side. So we need to get, get a vessel out of the way. And so to try to make sure that we're, we're making good use of that, of that service. You know, not, you know, just, uh, you know, having a, a, a deadhead trip over. We're able to get those, those vehicles over. We've restricted it to the under twenty, the under forty-foot trucks, which are primarily the multi-stop delivery vehicles. So that way they're able to get off the road, get over to the island, and then to be making deliveries before it gets too, too busy over on that side. The larger trucks we have stationed to, to come later in the morning, um, now instead of that five-thirty trip, so.
Thank you. All right, we'll look forward to hearing as you get to the next step. Thank you. Next we have, you know, I'm just gonna give it a moment, cuz I realize it's probably gonna be a bit of a mass exodus. So if you're not staying for the next thing, if you wanna just take a moment to head out and have your conversations far away from the door, please. It was just, it was just on the agenda as an update and status from, from them, cuz we have another, other issues on for tonight. Okay, next we are going to hear from Chris Messeraf, uh, from Republic Services, to give us a report and update. Welcome.
First off, talking trash shouldn't clear a room. It's actually a pretty interesting industry, so, um, I'm Chris Messeraf, the municipal services manager with Republic Services. As you guys probably know, we've serviced the town, uh, curbside and recycling for many years. And currently, we're midterm in a contract to expire June thirtieth, uh, two thousand twenty-two. Uh, we've, we've enjoyed the great partnership, uh, that we've had with the community over the years and look forward for that to continue, so. I'll give you a kind of a brief overview on the, on the operation, just to kind of bring people up to speed. We collect today, we run, uh, five to six solid waste trucks a day, depending on the day and the season. We, we run three recycling trucks, uh, a day. The, the trash is weekly, recycling's every other week, collection. We, we remove about, in terms of a month, about nine hundred tons of solid waste out of the, off the curb and out of the town, uh, every month. About three hundred tons of recycling every month. The solid waste is, is taken over to the Bourne landfill, which the town has a contract with. The recycling volume ultimately ends up into a material recycling facility in Westboro. On a good note, the, the town does a, a, a better-than-average, and I would say a much better-than-average job in terms of recycling percentage and, and contamination rate. I think I see some of the recycling committee here, which would probably voucher that, so. Something to be proud of, the town, the town does a good job. Not to say you can't improve, cuz there's always improvement, but, uh, overall, fairly, fairly good job. In terms of units collected, uh, some people don't realize, but we touch, uh, in terms of a week, about thirty thousand units a week between trash and recycling, and often about a hundred and twenty-five thousand units, uh, a month. Summertime naturally in Falmouth, it's a different animal, uh, it, it, the volume goes up in terms of thirty to forty percent. And we're probably pulling about thirteen hundred, almost, and I think some months, maybe one month, fourteen hundred tons of waste out in a month, so. It's quite a bit, uh, it's a fairly big town, I would say, in terms of, say, the Commonwealth as it goes, it's a, it's a good-sized collection. And we've been happy to be here through the years, so.
Is that just recycling?
Solid waste too, we do both.
Oh, so the thirteen or fourteen?
Trash, yeah, in the, yeah, in the summer, in the summer. On average, the balance, that's probably over the cost of the two months, the July, August. Uh, on average, it's probably about, about nine hundred tons, uh, that's coming out per, that's per month. Terms of, I would say, our, our call center, customer service center, a couple of years ago, we did centralize them. So all calls that are coming in are going into our call center. That information's getting dispatched back to our local site in Yarmouth where we operate from. That's where all our trucks are dispatched from. Calls, any issues from there and dispatching our trucks from there, so. You know, I, I, there's a lot more that goes behind the scenes in the solid waste business, and I, I don't know if I'd wanna take all night with the full time. Certainly open any questions that the board may have, or the town manager, assistant town manager.
Sure, so, oh, go ahead, Sue, you can start.
In the, you know, looking ahead, where we are looking at potentially a new contract, what are the, what's a gamut of increased costs that you would anticipate at that point in time?
Yeah, great, great question, so I get that a lot. In terms of Falmouth, the biggest one is the commodities. So, a couple of years back, the recycling commodity market has collapsed, I don't know if you know that. So, uh, that is not a Falmouth issue, it's not a Massachusetts issue, it's a, it's a national and a global issue. So, uh, if you go years back, we were actually, we used to get paid, the, the commodities used to subsidize the collection of the curb. There was such a value to it. It's eroded over the last, you know, if you even go back about three years ago, it was probably around twenty bucks or twenty-five dollar ton cost. Today, the cost is approaching triple digits, so we're close to a hundred dollars a ton in terms of commodity cost. That's like the net cost after processing per ton, so. It, it's, it's higher than the solid waste cost, which, you know, certainly makes it a challenge. So we definitely would have to anticipate that, yeah, unless the market improves in two years.
Would there be any sense in switching back away from single stream and doing assorted?
Yeah, and I get that question a lot too. So the, the, the quick answer is no, because the infrastructure has been designed around single streams. So the mater, the recycling facilities are designed to handle single streams. So even if you collected dual stream and brought it to these facilities, ultimately, it's going through a single stream line, so. And then the reality of it is collecting dual stream costs more money. So you'd have more cost of the curb to get that done too, so that necessarily wouldn't make sense, yeah. We can hope the market improves, that'll be the, that's, that's the best answer.
But down the road, is, do you think it's gonna go to, as opposed to even dual stream, as opposed to fifty years ago, sixty years ago, where you actually were sorting way more carefully, uh, and that there actually might be a market for just glass? And just paper?
Well, today, there's no market for glass. That's, uh, glass is devalued, there's a cost per ton to actually get rid of glass. It is a waste panel item, it's gotta be in the recycling stream, but it, it, it costs about, just the pure cost is about sixty dollars a ton to get rid of it. But it, the, the, the hook there is the facilities, our, our single stream facilities, so they, it, it doesn't really make any sense.
There's not another option?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
What, um, what percentage of the tonnage is generated from food waste?
In Falmouth? I don't know.
Oh, in general?
Well, food waste is historically heavy, so we know that, it's a, it's a heavy-based. You know, I'd be out of character if I said, but I'd be guessing, but I'd, ten or fifteen percent, ten percent, maybe based on weight.
Yeah, I think I just heard something on the news, but I think it was, um, you know, somewhere, some, sometimes as high as like twenty-five percent is something that I was listening to.
I mean, if you can get it out of the waste stream, you know.
You save, ultimately you save, it doesn't change what your method, but it, you're, you're saving in terms of.
There's been some pilot program, not pilot, there's actually some programs out there where there's been curbside collection of organic waste. The economics of it don't work yet, because if you came to us and said, we, we, you know, everybody would have to get a bin or a cart, you'd have to run separate trucks. The cost to do that will far outweigh the cost of pulling it out. So if people can compost and do stuff in their yard, great.
Or, or if the town can offer some potential service.
Or or if the town can offer some potential service of that.
Local site where people will drop it themselves. Yeah, yeah, that that would make sense. Yep, yep. It's the part when you start to add the equipment and the manpower to do it.
And then we, I just had a question in terms of service, and, you know, obviously, it's it's sort of summertime, and that strains all resources. But we were kind of having, and Julian can remind me of, I think it was particularly in the Ballymead area, some kind of chronic, and I know it was, you know, it was raised to to your attention, I think it was addressed. But can you just talk a little bit about, we've, from time to time, have had sort of pockets of like a chronic no pickup, you know, or no pickup of recycling, or or something like that, where it tends to, you know, for sort of be in one particular spot for a bit?
Right. And I I am aware of that. We kind of circled around with that, I think, about a month or maybe a little bit longer than that ago. It's been solved. You probably haven't heard anything since, but I think a lot of that's surrounded around the 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 area itself. And we were using a smaller vehicle to do that, and we had to really commit that vehicle to do that one area. And then, I'm not sure completely what happened, but the vehicle was somewhere else, and they were trying to do it with another truck. It it's been taken care of, and it's it's back on track. I I can assure you of that.
And can you just tell us, so if folks are experiencing that, just tell us sort of what the best thing is for that customer? You know, they go out, they've taken everything out the night before, they go out, and it's there at six o'clock at night. Who do they call? What should they do?
Yeah, you call our, call our eight hundred number, the the call center. From there, it'll be logged into our system. It gets down. And our our policy is to get it the next day. So if we're not there, we we will get it by the next day.
Sorry, is that number easily?
It's on our website, for the solid waste.
Because I know usually what happens is folks call the DPW. And then, which, you know, but it just kind of delays. What you're saying is if they call you directly, it's logged in.
It is, but if they, if they do call the DPW, we're getting it right away. So that that's also a catch. So I'm not, I'm not afraid for that.
It seems a lot of these opportunities happen, or these problems happen during adjusted week, when it's a four-day week. And what I was just wondering is that sometimes you're changing your schedule to do the four-day week, and maybe they're missing it. If they don't take it out the night before, and they say, well, they never come till ten. I'm not gonna bring it out till eight, because they don't come till ten, but that week, you've changed your schedule to be able to cover a larger service in a shorter period of time.
So what I can publicly remind everybody is have it out by seven AM. Because even if we have somebody on vacation, and they start at a different end or a different street, and and people become creatures of habit, and they know the trash truck has always come at, you know, nine fifty-five every day, and they wait till nine thirty to put it out, but if something happens and they get there earlier, that that could be a problem. That's why we always stress get it out by seven.
That's helpful to know, yeah.
So I believe our contract now is kind of a flat rate. You've agreed to take our trash for a certain amount of years. Is that correct?
It's a, yeah, it's an annual rate for the solid waste and recycling collection.
And is it capped at a certain tonnage, or you just take a chance and go for it?
No. So the the solid waste tonnage, there's no cap in terms of how much, how many tons we collect at the curb. It has to be a curbside residential. The town pays the disposal direct to Bourne, so we're not, we don't bill you for that. The recycling commodities, we bill the town at a cap of, it's roughly forty-two dollars, but we we lose about sixty dollars a ton every day on it. So that's the big, you know, the big hook, and what, back to your point, what's gonna change, because that's what we we do. But the, no, in terms of, in terms of the volume at the curb, that's, there's there's not necessarily a cap.
Given that the way this recycling market turned around and collapsed and cost you a ton of money, I'm wondering if the next contract might be something that's somewhat incentivized, to say, if the town agrees to try to reduce its tonnage by some composting program or improving recycling or something like that. Do you see that as something that's trending, or do you think it'll still be business as usual?
Well, I think it would have to depend on how much that shifted. So if it was, you know, if we could truly reduce the operating time and expense.
Or less trucks. I mean, they'd have to have something, because it doesn't really, it would have to impact what you're doing on the ground. Because otherwise, it doesn't matter what you're taking to the, we're paying for the, right, the volume doesn't matter. It really, it's it's your operation, so.
Time at that point, yeah. So it 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 would depend on how that, on how that would, how that would look. I don't think it would be dramatic. Remember, we're still gonna go down every street. We're still gonna stop at every house. Maybe there's one pound less than every unit. I mean, so it's something, we'll cer, we'll certainly look at it. We can certainly talk about it and and run some metrics on it to see what it would look like.
And I think some some haulers may be result resulting to just throwing everything in the trash right now and forgetting about the recycling. Is that?
Shouldn't do that.
I know, but.
We don't do that.
You still save a little money on the recycling over the cost of waste disposal. Is that right?
We do not. Well, in terms of collection here in Falmouth, they're separate.
Right, but I mean, as far as disposal cost, you used to get paid for the recycling, but now you pay to get rid of it. But do you pay less than the trash?
The, the, they're, they're, depending on where and what they're about, we're seeing them about the same. But it's, it's, you know, DP will tell you right out, we, as a waste hauler, you can't do that.
And we, I mean, just under the current contract, just so people are clear, I mean, first of all, there are lots of rumors that there's no more recycling going on. That's not accurate.
That's not accurate.
Okay, because people are saying, yes, it just costs more. But at the end of the day, under the contract we're under now, it it, we save money as a town for people to recycle, because we pay for the disposal of our trash. We're not, there's, you know, we're, it's not the same model for the recycling, so.
We're capped. Yeah, no, I'm I'm agreeing. We're capped. We're, the recycling rate is capped at a rate that is lower than the solid waste price.
So just in term, even if people don't care about the the green, you know, component of it, just so folks still understand that that recycling benefits us as taxpayers, because at the end of the day, it's that bottom-line savings.
And it's still the right thing to do.
Of course. But sometimes that doesn't motivate people. So if they're motivated just by by taxes, that's a good thing to remind them.
No, there's still, there's a financial benefit in town for it at this point, yeah.
Thank you. Any other?
Chair, can I just bring up one item? Chris, as as you're aware, and I know Peter McConney, our deputy public works director, is with us, who who oversees, works with, very closely with Ray Jack and and with Chris to oversee this contract. And I want to acknowledge and thank Peter. He frequently is the individual who carries the water for us if if there is a a nagging problem that arises, as Chris is aware, and we appreciate all that Chris is doing to work with us. One of the things that we have just informally talked about, and I just bring it up, is the the potential for routinizing, to a greater degree, the recyclables pickup with containers that could allow you to automate or semi-automate a pickup. And I know that Peter and I have had discussions about that in the past. It involves a significant capital expense, of course, to do that. And it's been talked about potentially doing it on a neighborhood-by-neighborhood basis. And do you have any thoughts or insight on that in general, Chris, particularly as as, you know, we approach some likely changes to come? Does it make sense to do that in steps and?
Yeah, I I probably have a lot of thoughts on it, but fully automate, what we call, so it's fully automation, both systems, recycling and trash. You don't have to do them both at the same time. You could do one and then the other one down the road. But generally, what you'll do is you will do it town-wide. I've never seen it where we've kind of divided a town. Not to say, you know what, certainly, I guess, something we can look at. But it's generally the way to go. I think the old, you know, if you think about, you know, the old-school trash collection, you know, manual collection, it's it's really going away. It's a thing of the past. And, you know, the the new garbage man is, you know, a guy sitting in a truck with a, it's like a, you know, joystick, playing a video game, dumping barrels all day. And that's generally the way it goes. It's it's certainly a lot safer. There's efficiencies with it to do it. To your point, capital investment is big upfront, but over time, you know, it certainly should should pay for itself over time. So, yeah, we do it a lot, and I've just automated a town in in July, so, and we continue to do it, so. I've got a lot of experience with it. It's probably something we'll definitely talk about in the next go-around. We could do it now, too. We can talk about it now, so.
Maybe, Chris, you you might make some information available to a peer. There's a follow-up on on some communities where you have done that.
Sure.
Maybe over the past two or three years that we could take a look at as potential models.
Would there be potential cost savings or time savings in having one side of the road only be that, if they're a small road, say, just bring your trash to the other side of the road, and so the truck only has to come down one side?
When it's fully automated?
Or even if, even just without?
Well, generally, we, so we see that on the fully automation side, particularly not on a regular road. But if it's, say, a back-down or a dead end, we try to get everything on one side. So they back down, do one side, and then and then go. It's it's safer, and it's a little bit more efficient. But to to have the whole town do that, that's that's a big lift, to get everybody to commit to put their trash on one side. And it, I don't necessarily think it's gonna save a lot of time, as long as the trucks continue to move and they got their routing down right. It 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 generally can work the way it is.
Yeah, just to to go along with sort of Julian's suggestion, I think this negotiation of this contract is obviously in a very different world than the probably last several contracts that have been negotiated because of what we've just discussed. So I think having that preliminary discussion about some of those options and weighing, you know, what sort of going forward are some potential models that the town might decide to use, looking at that whole picture. I think that would be helpful to do as far in advance as we can, so to hear a little bit more about what these other communities, particularly if you can find sort of a like, you know, to the extent that's possible, a sort of like-size community. I think that'd be helpful for us to have as a board.
No, I agree.
That'd be great.
Madam Chair, could I also mention, while we have people watching, how unusual it is in the Commonwealth to have a curbside residential trash pickup. There are only two communities on the Cape to do it. That's Bourne and Falmouth. So you live anywhere else on the Cape, and you handle it yourself. The community, in other words, in Falmouth, your tax dollars handle that as an ongoing service if you're a residential customer. And it is an increasingly expensive service, but one that, with the support of the Board of Selectmen, we've been very gratified that we can continue to do. I also know from my experience in other parts of the Commonwealth that it is also, it is a generally an uncommon service in other parts of the Commonwealth as well, not just the Cape. So certainly in very large and densely populated urban areas like Boston and Worcester, that's standard. But in communities like Falmouth, similar in size and makeup, generally, you do not have curbside residential trash pickup, so, and recyclable pickup. So it's an extraordinary service here. I know it's one that this Board of Selectmen has seen as valuable, and we continue to provide it and work work that within the budget. But the challenges are going to mount for all the reasons that we've talked about tonight, that the costs are escalating. But we recognize that it is a, an important service and one that pays dividends in our community. So I wanted to mention that, Madam Chair, as well.
Thank you.
I think it's important, I just want to add to that, that because of the economies of scale, I think we save money by having it done as a municipal level, rather than contracting out individually with a hauler to come and pick up our, or they have to, they pick up yours, and they skip ten people and pick up another person. I know my son has that kind of service.
No, that that's accurate.
Yeah, he's he's paying a lot more for that service than I'm paying through my taxes for that service.
The rate per unit per resident in Falmouth is significantly cheaper than another community that has to go out and buy, and buy the other one. Absolutely.
And I don't think people realize that.
Yeah, no, it definitely is.
Falmouth people don't. Everyone else does.
That's true.
So you know, we, oh, Peter. Yeah, please do. Please come on up.
As I was sitting there listening to Chris was speaking, one one item that was mentioned was the trash, the trash and the recycling, dumping the trash into the recycling. So the trash trucks dump up at Bourne. If the Bourne, and they they do a random selection of trash as it comes into the facility, if they find more recycling in the trash, they reject it. We get a rejection letter, and so many rejection letters, it makes us tighten up. So we have to watch out on both sides, from the town and from Republic delivering. So as far as they're saying dumping the recycling into the trash, there's a double check on that.
Good point.
It's Republic checking it, and it's also the ISWM, the the solid waste management facility. And the second item that I just wanted to mention quickly is, the waste management facility has, four times a week, they collect compost up there for food scraps and food waste, and it's a pilot program that we started about three quarters of a year ago. And right now, it's still being underutilized. We get a a monthly invoice, and it'll say in the bottom, it'd say it's underutilized. It's, they're not picking up as much as they could be. So if any resident wants to go up and they have, we have a, basically a compost shed right in the front entrance, right across from the, right across from the main trailer. And they can go in, they can dump right in there, and it gets picked up four times a week. And basically, it's a company out of West Falmouth. It stays in Falmouth. It's compost with me. They come up and they they turn it and.
Do you need a sticker?
That's outside the gate. So it's it's, there's no sticker for that.
And can you just tell people what their compost can consist of?
Yeah, basically, it consists, it consists of food scraps. It's, you know, food scraps, banana pails, fruit waste, basically anything out of God, or anything out of.
Not that you want paper, but if there's an empty in there.
Brown paper or paper towel, I think.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's more stuff that's compostable that'll that'll that that chans up. And they take it to the facility, and they have a a truck with a backlift on it. They take it to the facility in West Falmouth, and they process it, so. And there's not too many companies around that do that. I think Mashpee does it, and there's a few other towns in Cape do it, but there's only two companies around that actually come and pick that up. Compost is one of them. The other one's over the bridge, so.
Great. People should be utilizing that resource.
Residents can look into.
And I know there's a couple of members of the solid waste advisory committee. Did you have a quick?
Mark Finer in Solid Waste Advisory, I just, question for Chris. Have you assigned a number or a percentage to the, as to the contamination of our recycling? And then can you, maybe for the edification of the people, define, you know, contamination in recycling? And what, you know, I mean, tanglers and what people should look out for, because education's a huge part of this, and it's.
Well, as far as a number of percent, I I don't, I don't think I could give you an accurate number. But I I I'm fairly certain Falmouth is, is, like I said earlier, is better than, say, the average or state average. So the the town is doing a fairly good job, albeit there always can be improvement. But what shouldn't go in recycling is probably more, you know, more important. So the the couple of big things, plastic bags are probably the the worst of the worst, because they, one, they're not recyclable, but two, they just really jam up the the equipment when they go into a recycling facility. They just tangle them up. A lot of people put recycling in a plastic bag, and then they put it in their recycling bin. If that happens, that whole bin, that whole bag, once it hits a line, will just, the whole thing will get thrown away, even though there's good recycling inside. So you don't, you don't want to have that. You said tanglers, that's the other one. That's, that just wreaks havoc on the machines. Coat hangers, or hoses, or ropes. You don't want any of that in. And then really, any any food waste, or or, you know, bottles that are half-full of, like, say, ketchup. You want to have all that stuff cleaned out, because that, once it gets into a truck, can really spread and contaminate a load. So those are kind of the three big ones that that generally we see quite a bit over and over again.
But paper bags for your recyclables wouldn't be any problem.
Paper bags are good. Yeah, yeah, paper bags are good. Yep, yep. It's no plastic.
Yep. Did you want to make a quick comment, Alan?
Alan Robinson with the Solid Waste Advisory Committee. Chris, um, to your, do your staff who are out in the field doing the collections, how frequently are they actually noting to residents that their recyclables aren't meeting the requirements? That, you know, they've got styrofoam in an, or they put their recyclables in plastic bags. Are they giving those stickers? And can you tell us about that? And if, and if that's an effective way of communicating?
So I'll I'll probably answer the second question first. So it's a very effective way. So when we do sticker a bin that has styrofoam or plastic, it's, it's, we categorize it as like a oops sticker and put it on there, and it's used as an educational tool, not to embarrass somebody, but to show the resident to to clean it up. To answer your question, I'll probably be honest, we probably should do it more than we do it. That's probably the best way to do it. We do do it, but sometimes I think it, it, you know, the onus falls on our supervisors and our drivers to do it a little bit more. So generally, what happens is we'll see, we'll we'll put a lot of attention to it, and we'll do it, and then it may slide off a little bit, and then we'll do it again. But it is, it's a great mechanism. It's a great tool to use, and it's it's good to educate the the community on doing it, so, yeah.
And then just the last piece, along that education, we're gonna be trying to send out some education around recycling in, you know, mailing with our tax or water bill, I keep forgetting. Water bill, thank you. So any kind of collaboration? Um, so any kind of collaboration, I mean, I know it's sort of part of the contract that you guys are, you know, to help with some of that education, but we really are, you know, this board really wants to commit to getting that out, um, and just being good about, you know, all of these things that people have heard about the plastic bags, although they keep doing it. But just to even hear about, you know, I think people throw coat hangers in, uh, clothes hangers in all the time, because they don't, they, they think it's plastic, it's metal, it looks like it should be able to be recycled. So just, you know, we really want to make sure we're getting that education out, so hopefully, Peter's been working on it, Solid Waste Advisor is going to weigh in, but, um, obviously as the hauler, you know, we, we, you know, sort of would look to you guys to help with that piece as well.
And, and to add to that, one of the things we do is much, we have our own website, republicservices.com, but we also have a recycling website and it's called recycling simplified dot com. Has a lot of do's, don'ts, a lot of great information. One of the things we just added though is a K through twelve education curriculum that's free for the teachers, uh, to use. It has the whole coursework and it has everything on there. We just actually rolled it out about a week ago, uh, and it's all downloadable material and it's stuff that, that, uh, we can even use in the, in the Falmouth schools if we'd like as well.
That's great, because we just had somebody raise that exact issue about how, you know, you really, if you start with kids, that was sort of the model for the anti-smoking, right? If you start with kids and kids shame their parents and you can, you know, make a lot of pro- progress pretty quickly, so.
My kids do it to me and I'm in the business.
Yeah. Yep, just quickly, because we still have a number of things.
Um, Chris, I think you're aware that, uh, the town, you know, with Public Works and, and the board, is looking at the, the recycling IQ kit that the state offers. How many towns have you worked with, uh, that are doing that and what impact has there been?
So I specifically, and say in the last twelve or eighteen months, have not worked with a town doing it. However, there, there's, there's plenty of towns that have done it. What I would recommend is ask DEP to give you the results from those communities, um, because they will have the exact data to, to give you. They're the ones that really, it's their grant money, they, they run the project, um, they'll be better equipped to kind of answer the exact data on that. But they've had some, they've had some good results in certain towns.
Thank you very much, any other questions? Great, thank you, Chris, we really appreciate it for sticking around this late. Okay, now we are going to vote article recommendations for the 2019 town meeting. Um, I know there are some folks that, um, had sort of stayed late to either weigh in on the way the recommendations were written up. Um, I think what I would do is have sort of one comment, a two-minute comment for, um, we, we, you know, we don't need a big debate, that's what town meeting is for, but if there are, um, you know, any kind of clarifications or anyone wants to speak for a period of two minutes, um, I think we would do that for, if that's okay with this board. Um, because I know there's some Scrivener, maybe possible Scrivener error issues, so, um, let's, hold on, Grant, we're just going to go through it, we'll go through them in order and then when yours comes up, we can speak to it. Okay. Why am I not finding them in here? You want the articles? Yes. Yeah. Very high maintenance tonight, so. Okay, article, um, all right, Article eleven, so everyone received the explanations, um, that were worked on. I know it was a lot of work in a short period of time, so thank you to everyone who worked on that. Um, so Article eleven is, um, the vote of the Board of Selectmen to take, uh, to lease, purchase, or take by eminent domain, uh, portion of the land of eighty-four Main Street in Falmouth Village. Um, and it notes the explanation is, uh, the acquisition is, of this property for off-street municipal parking. Um, and it's in exploratory stages and the Board of Selectmen prefers to know whether town meeting approves the concept of its potential acquisition for this purpose. What do people think about the explanation and then we need to vote the article? Or I guess we can do it in the other direction.
I think it's a good idea and I move, move approval of placing Article eleven on the warrant.
Both the recommendation and the explanation?
Yeah, I think it's good.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. Article twelve, this is another, um, this is to lease, purchase, or take by eminent domain, some, uh, land, Worcester Court, at the intersection of Worcester Court and Springbars Road. Explanation, again, acquisition of this property is for municipal off-street parking purposes, same explanation as the previous one.
And, uh, I'd say the same thing as I said on Article eleven, I would move approval of adding it to the warrant and including the explanation as it is. The only thing I would consider adding is that with potential redevelopment of that Tavistreys area, this could be more important than the previous one. But I don't think that's necessary to state.
Second.
So explanation as is and then we can just address it at a time, okay? All those in, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Great.
Madam Chair, on the next Article thirteen, that is actually a finance committee article, so we drafted that for finance committee consideration.
Thank you, so we don't need to do anything on that? Okay, Article sixteen, this is, um, relates to, uh, permits and licenses, just reading the explanation. It authorizes a town to deny, revoke, or suspend permits and licenses to persons and business entities that are delinquent in paying municipal taxes, fees, or other charges. Um, and then it just goes on to explain sort of, um, exactly the time, it's the timing issue.
Exactly, the change here is that, uh, the prior law said that the town could only take action if the delinquency was for more than twelve months. And that restriction has been limited with the change in the state law, which the town can adopt.
I would move the recommendation to be as printed or however we worded for this, with the explanation as given.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great, thank you. Um, Article seventeen, this is a petitioner's article, I think, uh, Mr. Holcomb's not here, we heard the explanation on it, we have a recommendation from conservation.
So we'd have to decide what our recommendation is.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry for interrupting, but with the, all of the articles from sixteen on, we have drafted explanations for the board, we have not drafted the recommendation.
Correct.
So, um, so we're going to, I guess, let us know.
What the recommendation is.
It's going to be to, just to recommend or not recommend. And, and from there, the, the written recommendation is technical and we can, we can address that, we just need to confirm whether the board is recommending or not recommending.
If we're recommending indefinite postponement, you want to hear that tonight?
Correct.
Yes.
Then I recommend indefinite postponement.
Okay, do I have a second?
I guess I would second that, we've got the, uh, letter from the conservation, there was, I think there was only one dissenting vote on supporting opposing Article seventeen, so.
Okay, so I have a, oh, second.
You want a justification?
If you want to, but I mean, I, I, go ahead, yeah.
Okay, well, we can do that at town meeting.
Okay, so the, the recommendation is indefinite postponement, I have a motion, I have a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Article eighteen, this explanation, uh, this is Mr. Walker, um, and did you want to come up and just, I think he, what he pointed out was he thought there was some conf, some sort of confusing and/or maybe prejudicial words in the explanation?
Well, there would be. The explanation, I think, is, is anticipating what our viewpoint's going to be, so that depends on how we vote as to whether this explanation's going to hold true or not.
Right. Oh, yeah, please, yeah, you can.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Grant Walker, seventy-one Philadelphia Street Precinct Three. I am requesting a change in the explanation in the first sentence. The first sentence begins as follows, "This article proposes the adoption of more stringent energy efficiency requirements for new construction," and so on. "I am concerned about the words, uh, 'more stringent.' I think the general usage of the word stringent can suggest severity, excess, even cruelty, even unreasonableness. And the particular usage of that word stringent in the town meeting is problematic, in my opinion. In the town meeting of April two thousand and eighteen, that word was used by a town meeting member who spoke at length against adoption of the stretch code. I think it's a charge word for people in town meeting, positive for some, negative for others. So I am requesting that instead of the words, excuse me, "more stringent," uh, the reading or that first, uh, sentence of the explanation could read, "This article proposes the adoption of higher energy efficiency requirements for new construction."
Thank you.
Wrote that out, I have a copy for everybody.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, what are folks' thoughts on, um, this article and this explanation?
I think that, uh, that, I think your comment is, is accurate, I think this is probably a better way of describing, um, and wording the explanation, so I support that.
Let's first decide whether we're actually supporting the article or not.
Oh.
Do you have a motion to support the article?
Definitely, I definitely, this is, uh, long overdue, um, I think it's something that the state has been asking us to do more of and the state itself has made great progress, but this is pushing it down to the local level. And I think we ought to be getting on board with this, so I would move that we approve the article, or we recommend the article and the explanation as edited.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that, I think there, there's money available for the town.
For green communities.
Exactly, and it's time.
There's so many communities have adopted it, I mean, we're used to being leaders, but we're not leading on this one.
And I think, you know, we had this conversation last time at town meeting, but, um, you know, this has been an evolution where, where this, where the stretch code was compared to baseline was very far apart years ago. That is not the case, um, and in fact, we heard over and over again, even for people who were in opposition, were already doing this, um, in, in, for most of, you know, in many cases, so.
I also, I agree with Sam, by the way, on, on accepting Grant's language.
But the language. Um, I have a motion, I have a second with, um, let's just go as to the article, um, all those in favor of the article?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, all those opposed, none? And then, um, as to the explanation, we would be changing that, that language in that first sentence to say, um.
Higher rather than more stringent.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
Okay, do I have a motion? I do, you already started that, motion and second, okay? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great, okay, thank you, and I'll just give this to you, Mr. Suso, because it has some language.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, all right, Article nineteen, this is, um, to convey a portion of the town's land. This is, um, the issue of the house off of William Hollow Road, um, to carve out that property, um, and make it available for, um, an affordable housing project.
Well, we said we were going to send it to town meeting for decision, so here it is.
Yes, but it doesn't mean that we couldn't make a recommendation on top of it.
True.
I mean, so.
It would be confusing for us to recommend indefinite postponement for an article that we're putting forward.
Right. Well, I have problems with it, I mean, I, you know.
I do too.
You know, I, I, we've worked so hard to try to take land out of development for the most part and protect our freshwater resources. And I think this is just an incremental step back. And I, I think, given the amount of upgrade that this property will require to make it an affordable house, I have some real questions about this, and it is only a single-family house. It's not like we're putting in, you know, a series of, of rental units. So it kind of runs against a lot of the things that we're trying to do, both in affordable housing, but also in terms of conservation of natural resources.
At the same time, it's sort of symbolic of supporting affordable housing and I asked, uh, whether or not there would be, uh, issues with citing a house on there, with threatening the well. And they said you could cite a regular Title Five on it, Zone Two, so not as if it's really a hazard.
I mean, can we vote indefinite postponement with, with the explanation that as we sit here, sort of while we're making this vote today, there's very little information that we really have in front of us? And we had sort of a preliminary, um, I would say very introductory, I wouldn't even call it an assessment, but just kind of a pitch, really, um, without a lot of, you know, I think we saw some numbers, but I don't know that there was a lot behind it. So I think theoretically, because, you know, we are, we have this commitment to affordable housing, but I think we've all, we've talked about it several times, there, there, this isn't, um, this project isn't without some, some questions that are still unanswered at this point in time.
I think we'll look a little foolish that we've put this article on the warrant without enough information if we say that. And also, we don't want to drag this out another season, it's been sitting for thirty years, we should be able to decide by now.
Well, town meeting will make a decision, right?
And, and that's exactly what I was going to say, we, we, sort of the, the loudest thing that we said with all those questions is that we would put it to town meeting to decide. So I would agree with Doug that, you know, that that would make the most sense and that's what the expectation is.
And that's probably why we haven't heard anything else from them, they want to see if it's really going to town meeting, they'll make their case there with their numbers.
I actually think our explanation is a fairly two-part, two-pronged explanation, it both puts out the negative and the positives of this. So I think with our recommendation of supporting the article, but then putting out the significant problems with the article, um, may confuse people also, but I think it's the upfront and honest thing to do.
So do I have a motion and a second for the article and the explanation?
Yes.
I just need a second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No.
All those opposed? Okay. Great, um.
Just to clarify, have we taken a position to recommend?
Recommend.
Okay, so recommend as printed?
As printed, with, with the explanation being.
With this explanation.
Yes, exactly, kind of pointing out some of the, the challenges. Um, Article twenty, this is, um, sorry, I keep taking it from you. Um, a petitioner's article, this is the one that we talked about previously with that, um, that sort of entrance issue around the property owned by Lawrence and Lynch. And the explanation, I think, does a good job of explaining what, uh, why it's required, does anyone have any questions about it?
I, I move that we support Article twenty and its explanation.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great, okay. Article twenty-one, um, this is sort of a, we, we have a kind of a truncated version here, um, and this, the explanation is that the article seeks to establish policies for Falmouth law enforcement, other town officials. And it notes that town council has, has advised that town meeting does not have the authority to adopt law enforcement policies that are binding on the police department.
I found this a very hard article to recommend against, but I think I need to, that I just don't think it's the right thing for town meeting to be making, uh, I think as the town council said, for us to be establishing policy for the police department. Uh, I wholeheartedly agree with what it's saying, I just don't think it's an appropriate article really for town meeting.
And it's just one of those things, we're going to just sit there and debate for extended length of time to no avail.
That's going to happen regardless of how we recommend, but.
Right, I mean, I think.
I agree with you.
Yeah, I mean, I think the, the thing that just concerns me about is just the recommendation from town council, that what's being asked for.
Isn't within our authority.
Isn't within town meeting's authority.
Right.
That's what I mean, so I'm, I would say we, I would vote that we don't recommend it, because.
Recommend indefinite postponement.
Right.
Second.
I mean, I just don't think it's, it's not useful. It's just a, a statement.
We can't impose.
It's, it's addressing a problem that we don't seem to have in Falmouth, to begin with. And we don't have legal authority to.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think for me, it's more the latter part, I mean, I think it can always improve, you know, but, um, again, if we're, we really should not be recommending items that our town council has told us are not, um, legal for us to put and ask for town meeting to vote on.
That's my thinking.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second, um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Of indefinite postponement?
Thank you, aye.
Against?
Okay, Article twenty-two, this is, um, the single-use plastic bottles on town property, and I know this young man has been waiting since, um, like, okay. Did you want to get up to clarify something? You're just coming up to the microphone, I just didn't know if you had, I know you sent us an email. Okay, yep, go, yep. If you just want to come up and clarify the issue that was asked.
Introduce yourself, please.
You have to introduce yourselves.
Right, right, uh, my name is Christine Kircon, I live on fifty-three Sudwinder.
Uh, my name is Philip Gessen, I'm a senior in high school and I live on thirty-sixth Road. And I just wanted to make a few comments this evening to briefly address some of the questions we've, we've been asked about this bottle ban. Um, as it is written, there is an exemption for any town department when engaged in public health and safety operations. And for further clarification, that exemption also includes the purchase of, excludes, or that exemption also includes the purchase of water and single-use plastic bottles in preparation for an emergency. Although it is our hope that alternatives, uh, to plastic use for an emergency. although it is our hope that alternatives to plastic use for an emergency situation will be sought. The ban prohibits the sale of beverages in single-use plastic containers of any size on town property. And we found that on town property, the vendor, Indy Firm, for example, is already selling kombucha in glass bottles at the farmer's market. And ultimately, the language of the ban is meant to clearly and simply state that the town cannot purchase water or beverages in single-use plastic bottles, and prohibits the sale of beverages in single-use plastic containers on town property. If there's a hardship claim to meeting these requirements of the ban, we believe the appropriate response should be to find solutions that assist the person, organization, or business to carry out their activities while being compliant with the ban. The whole reason this was submitted is in response to current and emerging environmental and health issues that are caused by plastic production and consumption. And we feel that this ban provides effective and direct action that we need to take now.
Great, thank you. And thanks for answering. I know we had a number of questions that came up around those issues, so thank you for clarifying some of those. I know we forwarded a few to you.
Okay.
So that, I think, answers some of the questions we had.
Okay.
Great, thank you. And any discussion from this board?
We've just heard from our solid waste company that glass is worse. With glass, they can't do it. The glass is, it's not recyclable, but.
That's just the cost of recycling. That doesn't have to do with whether glass is inferior to plastic. Because glass does get ground up into sand eventually, whereas plastics, continuous polymers that are left in the environment for extremely long periods of time and change due to exposure to ultraviolet light into toxins.
And.
So I think there is a difference.
Right. And I think in terms of how they're manufactured, there's a different impact on the environment in terms of the, you know, petroleum that goes into the process of making some plastics. That's not the same as some glass. So, but it's, that was certainly a point that I think was a little surprising because everybody promotes glass and we're finding that's, in terms of recycling.
Like I said, infrared should be, ultraviolet breaks down plastics. Excuse me, wrong frequency.
We should move it as printed.
Infrared will probably do it too.
All right. Any other feelings about that with the, as printed with the explanation as well, right?
Correct.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you. Thanks. All right, Article twenty-three. This is a petitioner's article. This addresses the use of the current senior center that we are utilizing, and the request for it to be utilized for veterans services for some, sort of VFW, or veteran service center.
Yeah, not veteran services as much as, you know, a veteran's center, activity center.
I mean, I like the explanation regardless. I think it also does threads a needle the way the other explanation does in terms of pointing out there are some challenges with that site.
And I'm not sure about the final sentence connecting veterans and their families with benefits and services because that will likely remain at town hall. So I don't know that they're going to get benefits and services at this center as much as camaraderie, coffee, and a meal, or some group activities, or a headquarters for people to keep their pamphlets and flyers and equipment.
It is good to clear up that the idea is not to move the Veterans Office to this building also.
Yeah, I believe that is clear to me, but I don't think it becomes clear when you see it connecting veterans and their families with benefits and services. Oh, I see, excuse me.
Right, it's the whole, it should be noted the Veterans Agent has stated that the mission of his office.
Right, excuse me.
Which is connecting veterans with benefits and services is best supported by.
Yeah, that's right.
I guess one of the, and I've had discussions with some of the proponents for this article, but I, I don't understand why some, a room couldn't be set up in our senior center, which provides a lot more services to veterans, which still allows them to socialize together, you know, if they, they choose to want to group together. But gives them far more support, in my mind. And then I have the other question of maintenance of this building, you know. Is this group going to be maintaining this building continuously? I know if we lease it to them, it's going to become their responsibility. And so I, I, I would like to see, I mean, as part of the Town Meeting deliberations, I would like to see a business plan for how to maintain and manage this facility to make me actually vote for it as a Town Meeting member.
So you'd like us to recommend it so that you could see that debate on the floor?
I have no problem with the debate, certainly, yeah. But I have a lot of questions about the viability of such a facility and the benefits that it will serve.
I guess I, so I always struggle with this part of it because when we haven't seen, I understand that the debate is for Town Meeting, but when we haven't even seen the plan, it's hard to vote for something.
Exactly.
Because the endorsement, to me, makes it sound like this board thinks as-is, it's ready to go. And I don't know that, we haven't really seen a plan. I mean, I almost feel that it's, that indefinite postponement is appropriate because we need some sort of, we don't yet have a structure or an anticipated way that this is going to, we've, we've heard some general, and I think they, you know, folks have been thinking about it. But what's been, what we have so far is in.
We have put together a board. I met with Alan Wilson a couple of weeks ago. They have a board now that's, I think, five members. They've partnered with Together We Can as a funding mechanism. And I think they have more clear plans than have been made clear to us as a board, so.
I would move, my recommendation would be, or motion would be for indefinite postponement, but maybe include an explanation. At the time when we had to vote our recommendations, we didn't have some of the details we would need to be able to support it. It could happen that we have those details before Town Meeting, and we could on Town Meeting floor change our recommendation because we have more information.
Why don't we say that we'll make a recommendation on Town for?
We actually had to, in the warrant, I think by the charter, make a recommendation.
We do, before the printing of the warrant.
Peter, did you want to weigh in on that?
Just a, a process suggestion. Usually when the town is going to lease property out to a third party, the lease is subject to procurement, and the terms of the lease are negotiated by the Board of Selectmen. There is this, there is a statute that makes this difference, so procurement is not necessary. But I wonder if it might put the board in a more comfortable situation if the recommendation could modify the article to authorize the Board of Selectmen to negotiate a lease. And that way, you would have some control over, over the terms. You know, if there are questions that you feel are unanswered at the time of the Town Meeting vote, that you would have time to get those answers and determine, well, who is going to be in charge of maintenance? And, you know, how are all these details going to work?
But we can't modify their, their.
This article.
This article. I don't think we can modify.
It's a petition.
But we could make a recommendation of indefinite postponement.
With that explanation.
Saying, however, the board would be, will, does feel that they could support an article that at this.
It would have to be an amendment, right, because the petitioner is going to be responsible for the motion from the floor.
And they could make a main motion that then had the language that you just described.
Right, or the board could suggest it as an alternative to the main motion on the floor as an amendment.
Yep.
Okay. So with that, if, so is the recommendation might indefinite postponement with some explanation that we then follow, you know, what, some explanation about what we just discussed? And we can figure out how you word that. That at this time, the board doesn't have the information, but, et cetera.
Right. So if the recommendation is going to be indefinite postponement, if the explanation simply says that, you know, the board is not opposed to the concept, but doesn't have sufficient information to endorse the lease at this time and.
Yes. We can figure out how we would submit that, but.
I don't want, I don't want to go too far into what-if scenarios.
And then we can just make sure the petitioner understands, you know, what, what maybe is being sought for Town Meeting, so. Okay?
So I'll second Doug's motion.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Great. Okay. Now we have the Charter Review articles that were sort of written up with the smaller explanations here. All right, we'll just go through them. I hope people have looked at them. I think everybody has. Article twenty-four, which is amend use and placement of words, phrases, and definitions.
I move Article twenty-four as printed.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Article twenty-five, which is amend C two-one-A, Representative Town Meeting.
Excellent number. I move Article twenty-five as printed.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Finance Committee, this is just sort of addressing really where they are in our town governance. Thank you.
I move Article twenty-six as printed.
Second.
Yes.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, Article twenty-seven.
I move Article twenty-seven as printed and explained.
I'll second that.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Article twenty-eight, this is, again, just kind of explaining what the powers of Board of Selectmen, right?
Yep.
Move Article twenty-eight as printed.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great. Article twenty-nine, this is surrounding the Planning Board. It strengthens Planning Board's responsibility to recommend amendments to the zoning bylaws.
I move Article twenty-nine as printed.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, this, Article thirty, clarifies some contradiction between the Charter and some state law about the housing authority.
Move Article thirty as printed.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Article thirty-one, this is addressing the different committees that are going to be outlined within the Charter.
It suggests there's a couple more to go into the Charter.
Correct.
I move Article thirty-one as printed.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great. Article thirty-two. This is again the issue of those other committees, okay? The Recreation, Waterways, Beach Committee, Human Services.
I, I think along with this, you know, conversation, we should continue the thought about whether it's working through a bylaw or somehow, you know, I think, I think we still need to look at the way our committees work. And we did such a great job on the handbook. And, you know, I think this is kind of the final piece. If we're gonna, if we're gonna make the Charter Corrections, I think we have to make a commitment to follow through with that.
Peter?
Just a suggestion on those lines. So there, the, my understanding from Town Council is the board currently has the authority to create committees. So there, there may be some concern for those committees about this vote and the tenuous position that it places the committee in. So the two ways that, that these committees could be recreated, once they're removed from the Charter, is a Selectmen vote or a Town Meeting vote. So I guess my, my question for the board is, do you want to consider taking a vote before Town Meeting to establish these committees? So you can go to Town Meeting, not just with a, a promise to take care of it down the road, but we've already created this committee by vote of the Board of Selectmen, so approval of this article does not eliminate these committees.
I think that's a crucial idea.
I agree.
I thought that we determined that changing the language in the Charter didn't eliminate.
It doesn't actually eliminate. It, it doesn't really eliminate them. It just changes, it could, it could give the perception that somehow.
Right, this is reassurance.
Yes. So it's, it's a reassurance, so it would be a vote to just re, it's really a recommitting, reaffirming.
The constitution.
Yes, yeah.
So that should be agended.
So, so the explanation could, the last sentence, as long as staying bodies advising areas, the CRC has recommended that the board.
Bless you.
Codify their existence, and the board has, has, and then we can say, and the board has taken the advice and voted to create them.
Or to reaffirm their.
Right, I mean.
And we'll have to have that vote to do so, but.
Right.
I just don't want to say create them, because then it sounds like we have to reappoint everybody that's on that.
To affirm their.
To affirm their, their.
Tenued.
Continued nonexistence, because that sounds really dramatic, but, yeah.
Well, you could add that sentence right now and vote on it.
Well, is.
That's taking a position.
But I still think we have to take.
I'm just saying, do we.
You can take a standalone vote as well, but I'm just saying you can add it to your explanation.
Right.
If you intend to.
And I'm saying we're not doing it by bylaw language, we're doing it by.
Right.
By just a decision.
You're going to put that in your explanation.
The board, so, so you could say, I think we want to be careful about, you know, promising something that's taking place in the future, right? So you could say the board is committed to putting this on the agenda and taking a vote.
Well, the explanation would be after we've taken a vote. I'm saying we put this in our agenda two weeks from now and voted so that when this is printed.
Yep.
Unless we change our minds or something, but.
Well, that's, that's the question. Why don't we just, why don't we just do this in two weeks and then announce it on Town Meeting floor?
I like the idea, though, of adding the, the sentence at the end saying, this Charter change by no means eliminates these committees and.
That's okay.
What else we would say to go along with that, but.
Yeah, that this, that this, this Charter change should not, does not eliminate and does not change the operations of these committees. And then that other sentence, the CRC has recommended that the board codify their existence, and the board does so by, or the board will do so by voting to reaffirm their, whatever, I don't know, not reaffirm, but. Reassert their.
Reassert their standing.
Reassert, reassert their.
Standing, that's a good word.
Standing is a good word.
Yeah. So that's the language that we would approve now, and then we would take that vote at our next meeting.
Yeah, okay.
Right?
Or you could say the standing is subject to a vote of the Board of Selectmen, which kind of confirms Peter's, you know, not wanting to say something is done in the future unless it is.
Right. But by the time this is printed, we will have done that vote, right?
Right, that's true.
Unless we all get hit by a bus.
Knock on wood.
One.
We can't tie our hands to necessarily vote something we have not actually discussed.
Right, I understand what, yeah.
That's, that's.
Because the vote's not taken.
Right. One, one minor edit that I think is straightforward. The, the proposed recommendation says that the CRC has recommended the board codify their existence in bylaw language or by other means. I think we can be explicit there, or by vote of the Board of Selectmen, because we know what that other means is. It's by vote of the Board of Selectmen. That clarifies things a bit.
Yep. Good, great. And then we will have taken that, then we will take that vote, and then we can explain it.
So are we going to add a sentence at the bottom of this?
He's going to add that sentence saying that it by no means changes, and then the standing piece. Will you just read that back to us, Peter?
Um, I, I can drive. So, so the, the, the last sentence as proposed is amended to read, the CRC has recommended that the board codify their existence in bylaw language or by vote of the Board of Selectmen. And this Charter change does not eliminate these committees. I got that.
Yeah.
I'm a little fuzzy on the next one.
And then it can just say, this change does not eliminate the committees and does not change the operation of these committees.
Sure.
We said that earlier, right?
No, I'm just saying, I'm just saying you change that sentence that has that in it. So you would say does not eliminate and does not change the operation.
I might say the function of the committees.
Yeah, function.
Yeah.
Rather than operation. Operation is kind of how they do their business, but function is the purpose they serve the town.
So from the Charter, does not eliminate or change the function of these committees.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Great. With those changes, do you have a motion?
So moved?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you. And then can we just remember to put that on our agenda for our meeting on the twenty-first? We'll add that on.
Twenty-first or twenty-eighth?
Twenty-eighth.
Twenty-eighth.
Twenty-eighth will be your next regular business meeting.
Right, sorry, twenty-first is planning, the joint meeting. Okay, Article thirty-three, Charter. Amend C seven-five, appointed. This is the Board of Assessors. And I'm just reading to see, this is about the appointment period.
Yes, question from the audience.
Just to clarify. Easy. The clarification there is it removes the Board of Assessors from the term limits rules. That's essentially what it does.
Thank you. Just reading if that, if that explanation, though, really. Yes, okay. No, I think that that's a, okay. Do you have a motion?
Move Article thirty-three as printed.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
This is the revision of bylaws. This is just to create more flexible, flexibility to take a look at bylaws and review them periodically.
Move Article thirty-four as printed.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you. Those are great explanations. Thanks for everybody who worked on those. Okay, we have, we've already done the broadband. Next, we need to talk about the, we have an upcoming Planning Board, a joint meeting with the Planning Board, and that is going to be on October twenty-first. And we just need to talk a little bit about. And we just need to talk a little bit about some possible proposed subjects for that agenda. And we have some...
Some proposals from planning.
Yes, we do.
Nice.
And I'm just going to pull them up.
Housing and Transportation were the two?
Yes, kind of two broad categories is housing and transportation. Did everybody get a copy of that? I think there was an email, I don't know if that just go...
Yeah, it's in the packet.
Oh, okay, great.
It's the last thing before the minutes.
Okay, any thoughts from folks about what they would like us to spend time talking about?
I think both topics are certainly worth it, I would just change the order. I just, transportation's a newer topic for us to talk to the Planning Board with, and I don't mean to diminish the importance of talking about housing, but we have talked about it before. I think we can revisit it again, but I just would want to start off with transportation as a new topic to handle.
And do we think, thank you, do we think that we would, given all the things you could talk about under transportation, do folks think it's the standalone issue, do we think we do both in a joint meeting? What are people's thoughts about how we spend that, that, you know, is it a kind of a deeper dive into the discussion about transportation?
I think it'll be deeper into housing.
I agree, that's a far more complicated issue.
I agree more with Doug because there are so many venues and we've had so many housing discussions. It's more a matter of keeping it on track and dealing with new issues, whereas transportation really affects every single bit of development, housing, commercial, and, you know, with the development coordinator issue that we've been talking about in strategic planning for the last four or five years, this is really kind of a way to spearhead that and integrate. You know, it touches parking, it touches...
Traffic.
All economic development, so I kind of think that we'll get to housing through the transportation topic.
I think the other piece is that, you know, the thought was that perhaps this board could, you know, we've been doing these listening sessions, we've been having joint meetings with not just planning, but other committees. And one idea was to perhaps at the beginning of the year, look at the issue of affordable housing, but more, so in a joint setting, but where we maybe break out into smaller groups and do some real brainstorming around, maybe a proposed lip, you know, process, so that we could get something kind of tangible, move the ball forward with every, with sort of the relevant committees. And instead of just all, you know, brainstorming and talking, but kind of getting into smaller groups, where it's, you know, member of the Board of Selectmen, someone from planning, someone from zoning, and we, and housing, affordable housing, try and talk about that. So if that's something that we might do at sort of the beginning of 2020, then maybe the transportation piece is a new, interesting thing to discuss that we haven't done yet. So I don't know if folks...
I wonder if you could do transportation and then one or two of the housing issues that, not the whole thing, but maybe pinpointed...
Like maybe form-based code, which I know Planning Board has been really...
And the 40Rs.
Shouldn't it be transportation and traffic? I think traffic in the town and looking at our traffic flows in conjunction with transportation is important. And I think that, to me, yes, that warrants being set up, because I'm not sure we've really taken a good holistic look at traffic patterns in the town in a serious kind of way for a long time.
Well, I think it would be a shame to push housing off. I think we're right on the edge right now of getting some activity, and I think we really need to lead on it. And I think we need to identify some new funding sources right away. And I think, I think the housing is our biggest problem. I think transportation is a great thing that we need to talk about, but I definitely don't want to see housing come off.
Come off, I don't think that was...
Oh, I thought you said when transportation and traffic...
It was a question of which one do we start with, right?
Yeah, well, and also I think maybe trimming, I don't think we're going to have substantive discussions on both in one, I mean, both of those items, unless we're going to meet for four hours, and maybe we are, but generally it's, you know, maybe a two-hour, three-hour meeting.
I'm fine with starting with transportation, because it's going to be, like, it's the newer topic. We're going to do an overview, identify the subject, and then when we get into housing, maybe go a little deeper and come up with some fixes that we can do to why...
Or maybe we can, maybe look very specifically at sort of a narrow piece around housing, you know, like have a, Peter?
Just, I mean, to state the obvious, the two boards are supposed to meet twice, jointly twice per year, and these are both pretty beefy topics, maybe you do one at one meeting and the other at the other meeting.
I think we're going to have more to talk about at the next meeting, there's stuff that comes up. I don't, I'm worried about, you know, not leaving that open for that topic that might be really important and really move something. I think what we've consistently said is we start with traffic and then we move to housing, and it's a matter of...
What we fit in.
Yeah, well, do we target...
So in other words, we have that long list there, obviously, we're not going to cover all of those things in a meaningful way.
Right.
So we can work to kind of narrow, if this board's preference is to start with transportation, I don't think a preference was stated by planning, they just said sort of either one of those topics would be, actually, I think their statement was either one of the topics could take up the whole time. So maybe we can work with Planning Board to think about an agenda that maybe includes both those issues, starts with transportation, and then focuses in some way on the affordable housing piece.
Let me just ask it a different way, what would we hope to come out of this joint meeting? I mean, other than some ideas on where we should be going, you know, kind of maybe some prioritization of what we should be addressing first. I mean, the funding of affordable housing is absolutely critical in my mind.
That's what I'd like to fix right away.
But, I mean, we should be doing some consensus building through this meeting and discussion, right? So...
Agreed.
If we can agree that that's the purpose of it, that we're probably not going to come up with any formative decisions at this point, but at least we can begin to think about what we should be focusing on.
I, and I, yeah, go ahead. Well, I was going to say, I think with all of that, I, you know, I would, you know, really support the chair's discussion with the Planning Board chair to figure out how to translate this board's feelings into an agenda that might last all day.
Right, I know, exactly, okay, that's fine, I'll take that back and we'll talk with Pat, and we will figure out, you know, what we can best sort of use our time for, so. Great, okay, minutes of public session, September 16th, 2019, and public session, well, we'll start with that one.
I move approval and release to public.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, minutes for September 23rd, 2019. Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
I think they said they were being worked on, didn't they?
Yes.
Yeah, we can't act on those.
Okay. Yep, the executive session minutes?
The whole list?
I know, we got that entire list, it's...
I went through them, the only question I have is that in some cases, I mean, I don't know, we actually would only be approving one session of a particular series of executive minutes. And it's, the way it's listed is only by date, and it doesn't specify the particular session of that executive meeting. And we might be throwing something out there that we really are not aware of.
Was that covered by Town Council, Julian?
That's the question.
It can be broken out, how about, how about we bring that back to the board with a breakout?
Yeah, I think that would be helpful.
I think it would be very helpful, because there are, in some cases, there are multiple sessions covered with that set of minutes. And it's, and I looked at that after a while and said, whoa, wait a minute, maybe we shouldn't be blanket voting to approve and release all of these. But I, you know, that's a judgmental call I wasn't ready to make.
No, I think we can just ask Town Council to weigh in.
Down the road, but...
Well, but you want to get it right, I mean, it's, it's got to get it right, so, there's personnel issues and otherwise, so we want to make sure.
Exactly, exactly.
Great, okay, thank you, so we'll get back to that, individual Selectmen reports?
Well, I went to, Cape Cod Commission had a coastal planning tool demonstration this morning at the Mashpee Library, and I went to that, and it was somewhat useful. I found that the tool is really sort of designed as a neighborhood kind of a thing. It's broken into two acre hexagons, and while we were practicing, I tried to find the infrastructure along Surf Drive Beach, and it's not in there. They do list sewer areas, and I also tried to find out if I could put a revetment in front of my property on Shorewood Drive, and it didn't have that as an option, so it's a little bit limited, but it does give you an idea of where the flooding is going to be and how bad it's going to get in your neighborhood, so, go onto the website and check it out. Also went to the water quality management meeting, and I had one question that came up at that meeting, and I wonder if anybody could remind me, for that oyster project, they don't have any money from their article for water quality monitoring. I know when we did Little Pond, there was monitoring, but there's no monitoring in this one, and Mr. Zweig had wondered about that. And I thought, I saw somewhere that we were spending some money where there was a project for doing water quality monitoring in association with that. Does anybody else remember that? It's a question that I promised to look into, so...
So this is water quality monitoring specifically in association with the Eel River aquaculture?
Yes.
No, I, I think the, I don't believe there is any monitoring as part of the pilot program. It is, the measurement is based on the nitrogen going in and coming out. So we're going to be measuring, we're literally going to be measuring nitrogen removal and then relying on the existing monitoring that is already taking place in all of our major estuaries in terms of over time, you know, how are, how are the nitrogen levels changing?
Okay, and that's satisfactory, because the majority of the committee felt like it would be a bit of a waste of time anyway.
It's a lot of money, I mean, you know, the, the, adding additional monitoring over and above what's already taking place to address our comprehensive wastewater management plan requirements, that is going to, you know, it's going to be the same cost as the actual aquaculture. Actually, it'll dwarf, the monitoring would dwarf the town's net cost of the aquaculture.
Such a high rate of flow there, you're not going to be accurate anyway, okay. All right, well, that's the two key things that I wanted to mention tonight.
Quickly, Onofsky Keeper's House renovation is moving along. I went to the CPC meeting on the 26th of September, and they're working on various articles and looking at some of the projects. I enjoyed going to the police night out, I think Doug was there, it was a different part of the year this year, it was, you know, but nevertheless, it was fun to see particularly the children of the officers running around, climbing in and out of vehicles and seeing what their parents were doing. Finance Committee is working through our proposed capital budget, and for the most part, you know, doing it in a respectable, thorough vetting way. Last, we had the Falmouth Housing Summit last week, and I was very impressed that we had, I know Julian and Peter were both there. We had a big turnout, we pretty much filled the Herman Room. I thought Eric Turking did a phenomenal job of providing a history of the affordability, I'm going to say it that way, of housing in Falmouth, going back, you know, into the 40s and talking about various efforts to provide affordable housing from people coming back from fighting wars and what have you. But then also the, how the inaffordability has just increased over the last 10 years. I think pretty important points, you did an excellent job.
You did a great job of reminding us of what Bob Murray had to pull up his bootstraps and do things that just were out of the box to get things going here.
Only Bob Murray probably could pull off.
But at least citing some of those developments that have been successful and have at least helped to stem the lack of affordable housing in time. We had nice presentations by people who need to employ, need employees. In this case, Ed Dunn spoke for municipal employment, and we had Bill Zammer speaking for the restaurant business. And then we had Paul Nitzwetsky kind of giving a perspective on a bigger, kind of a Capewide perspective, he being now an executive with Cape Cod Healthcare. And then we had testimonials by individuals whose families have been given or had the opportunity to take advantage of affordable housing that we've subsidized, get up and speak about their particular situation in a very moving way. So overall, I thought the summit was really a good way to reflect on where we are and where we need to go.
Pass. Okay, Town Manager's report?
Just to please attend the past Finance Committee meeting, and I know they meet again tomorrow night, and they're making good progress on their work. I was pleased to participate in multiple interviews for police officer vacancies. As the boards are aware, we have a large number of those in the current fiscal year, and we're moving forward on that within the limits of timetable for civil service. Housing Summit, I agree, was very enlightening, and I was pleased to attend the police open house again as well, thank you.
Senior senators moving along nicely, we did have some concerns from some historic preservation advocates about some light stanchions that were placed close to the building in error, and those are going to be addressed. I'll be meeting with the Advisory Committee on Thursday to discuss that further. And just want to let the board know that we have a staff working group that has selected a consultant for a very small fee to help us put together the playground design and the equipment selection, and that will be vetted with the Recreation Committee and all of the other stakeholders on that municipal campus to bring a proposal to the Board of Selectmen. Our timeline there is to get the project completed before the July 1 summer recreation program.
Are you going to ask any kids?
Yeah, yeah, we will.
Over your turn.
Great, second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, I'm going to give this back to you.